Commissioners, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
And we're recording.
Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the Boulder County Commissioners. It's a public hearing with the county commissioners on the cropland policy before the board and also for the Boulder County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. The commissioners are very appreciative of the Post Act members joining the hearing today, of which Jim Krug is the chair, and we appreciate the members of the public where we can put this today and those who have submitted written comments which have been some will were given to us and will continue to be given to us for reading. And the purpose of today's public hearing is for the members of the Boulder County Commission Commissioner and the members of the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee to hear from the public on this important issue. We know there's a lot of public interest in how Boulder County manages the open space, which is such an asset to our community. It helps to define the quality of life we all enjoy. All of the written comments will have been provided to the commissioners and Post Act for our review. We will not be making any decision today. It's important to remember, but today is about hearing from the community. Post Act will be meeting on October 28th. You might want to mark that down, October 28th, in a public meeting with no additional public testimony to ask questions of staff, consider the public testimony from today and deliberate to provide recommendations to the commissioners. Then the commissioners will have the opportunity to ask staff questions, consider public testimony and Post Act's recommendation and deliberation on November 4th. Here are a few ground rules for the meeting. It's really important that we hear from everyone today. That's why we're here. We're we're looking forward to hearing from people and we know this is important to people and we appreciate you being involved. And to that end, I ask that we all keep our comments respectful so that every person is comfortable giving their opinion, even though it might be a minority view. We should be tough on issues, but not on one another. I'll be frank with you. I heard a previous meeting on this topic. Some people were not very respectful. And if somebody is talking about a person or something like that, I'll I'll interrupt and ask them to pay attention to the issue. And if somebody persists, we can have you in your testimony. I know that sounds a little harsh, but you know, we're lucky to have the opportunity to have these kinds of opportunities. There's enough disrespect going on in the country today. And we owe it to one another to listen to one another and to focus on the issues so that we learn from one another. So staff is going to start it off with a presentation and it's about going to be about 20 minutes. Then we go to public test. There might be a few questions after that. And then we go to public testimony. And people had a time could pool time at nine minutes. Others will be at three minutes. We can't do any more pooling of time. It's just not logistically possible. So when you speak, please say your name and address. It's commonly forgotten and that would help us. We're forming a record here and we need you to tell us your name and address. Let's see. Oh, and we can add you if you're new and you haven't signed up ahead of time, we can still add you through the chat. Just ask to be added to the witness list. And the chat, by the way, is to be only used for logistics and signup issues, not comments. What you will be doing is doing, if you did that, a comment when somebody else is speaking, which we want to hear everybody's testimony without interruption. So please just use it for logistics and signup. If we go past six, we will have a dinner break at six. And commissioners and Post Act members, please use your Zoom hands raised for questions and comments. And just remember, you will have a chance to ask staff questions at the next public meeting when you deliberate this. So with all of that, we will start with staff presentation.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners and Post Act members. Just let me know when everybody is able to see the presentation.
I can see it. Thank you.
We can see it. It's running off the edge of the page for me. The text is. It's like it's zoomed in. There you go. There you go.
All right. Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Advisory Committee members. We are here today for a joint public hearing to provide an update on the cropland policy. My name is Mike Foster and I'm the Agricultural Resources Division Manager and I'm here today with Teresa Glawaki, Parks and Open Space Department Director and Prisana Shnar, who is an agricultural resources supervisor. Next slide. The purpose of today's joint public hearing is twofold. Provide updates on agricultural activities that are required in the cropland policy and offer recommended amendments to the 2017 version of the cropland policy. I want to emphasize that the cropland policy is our handbook for how our county owned ag lands are managed and our tenants are required to follow this policy explicitly. And having clarity in this document helps to ensure that everyone is clear on what we're trying to achieve. I'd also like to emphasize that our farmers are partners in conservation and that we as county staff would not be able to successfully steward the lands without them. We also want to ensure that the long-term economic viability of the ag operations in Boulder County as which can be very, very challenging in an increasingly urbanized area. And lastly, as as public land managers, we want to ensure that resource values are being considered in ad practices, including soil health, habitat values and water quality, all of which can have an influence on farming operations. And the way we've set this up is you'll see a green banner at the top of each of the slides. And this is really meant to be sort of as a cookie crumb to understand where we are in the presentation. Green banner are the policy updates and then the blue banner will be the recommendation portion of the presentation. Next. Before we share our updates, I'd like to provide some context for today's meeting by offering some key milestones over the last 10 years. I do acknowledge that this is a very summarized version of the key milestones. There's a lot of detail that went into each of these, but again, trying to provide a high level summary of all the activities that have gone on in the past 10 years. Starting in 2012, after about an 18-month stakeholder engagement process, the county adopted its first cropland policy, which still allowed the growing of GE crops. By 2016, the Board of County Commissioners at that time approved a phase out of GE crops of corn and sugarbeets by the end of 2019. After receiving some feedback from the farming community, the county approved Appendix 13, which is also known as the GE Transition Plan. And that was really meant to help outline a number of key strategies to help farmers transition out of GE technology into more conventional technology. Now go into more details here in a couple of minutes. We spent much of 2018 trying to operationalize Appendix 13. And by 2019, again, after receiving some feedback from our farmers, the Board of County Commissioners at the time decided to extend the phase out of corn until the end of this calendar year, extend the phase out for sugarbeets to the end of 2025. And a phase out of neonicotinoid pesticides was also added to be included at the end of this year. Next, please. Again, some context here, approximately 25,000 acres of agricultural land are owned by Boulder County Parks and Open Space. Of that 25,000, 16,000 of them are cropland acres, growing a wide variety of crops, including alfalfa, hay, wheat, barley. Within those cropland acres, approximately 2,800 of them roughly are roughly split between genetically engineered crops of corn and sugarbeets and organic crops. The breakdown of those crops looks like this. The vast majority of cropland is not either in the certificate or organic certification or in the GE portion, but everything else. So we've got about 6% of our croplands are actually certified as organic. We've got about 6% of our croplands in GE corn and 1% with GE sugarbeets. About 10% of our land is in some phase of organic transition and that can be everything from their working farmers are working on getting the crops actually certified to being just pesticide free. So a wide range of organic transition. Next slide, please. As I had mentioned, Appendix 13 outlined a number of key strategies that were really designed to help protect the viability of agriculture in Boulder County. And I'm going to provide a little bit more context for each of these as we work through the table, but this is really meant to kind of summarize at a high level what the key strategy was and progress we believe that we've made in each in each of those key areas. Next slide. The first strategy, which is assisting our tenants with GE leases, were really designed to help develop farm operating plans, identify and promoting promoting training opportunities, working to develop incentives to help our farmers through this transition phase. And we believe that we've made pretty significant progress in this area. By the end of 2021, 85% of our properties will have operating plans. In addition, we've been encouraging our farmers to attend the Soil Revolution Conference and other trainings as we become aware of them. Next slide. Supporting agriculture in Boulder County. Again, we believe we've made pretty significant progress in this space. The intent was to provide organic incentives, help deliver on capital improvement projects on farms such as irrigation infrastructure converting from flood irrigation to center pivots as well as other facility improvements such as fencing and facilities like hay sheds, things like that. It was also look aimed at helping to research and develop new markets. Again, we believe we've made some pretty significant progress in this space. We've invested over a million dollars in incentives and infrastructure improvements. And we've supported farmers that have pursued NRCS funding to make some of those infrastructure improvements. We've also supported those farmers that have continued and wanting and have wanted to pursue organic certification through reduced rents and cost sharing of certification expenses. We've also done a lot to help promote the Soil Revolution Conference. This year is going to be the sixth year and Boulder County has been a proud sponsor of this Soil Revolution Conference all six years. We've also been helping our farmers with grazing management and grassland health programs. We've been collaborating with CSU on the carbon sequestration project and we've begun to install water sensors so we can better track how water is being used on our farms. Last year, we were working with tenants on what we're calling the Boko Bean Project where we grew or one of our farmers grew local beans and we were able to sell those to local schools and prisons. Again, really trying to enable that farm table approach. We've also continued to explore composting opportunities, both through a local facility as well as compost research to help our farmers incorporate compost into their ag management practices. Next slide. Data collection and monitoring. We've believe that we've made moderate progress on this. Really, the intent was to look at how we collect and use data and sharing best practices. The egg division has experienced some pretty significant turnover these last couple of years. So we really haven't been able to make as much progress in this area as we would like. However, this is going to be a pretty significant focus for us in 2022 as we develop a soil health monitoring program and I'll, you know, get into a little bit more of that in in a few minutes. Next strategy was to launch a sustainable ag research center. And the intent was to help investigate local agricultural production, including GE crops that really finds a balance between farm economics with environmental sensitivity such as decreased or increasing carbon sequestration, water conservation, et cetera. This was pretty thoroughly investigated by the county and actually went out to bid in order to select a vendor to to support that effort. Staff presented the cost proposals to the previous Board of County Commissioners and at that point in time, the board decided not to pursue that initiative. So we've listed this as is not feasible. But we have continued to work with our our farmers to to find that balance between economics and environmental sensitivity. So again, this is this is not a done thing. We can are continuing to work on this. Next slide, please. And then the last strategy was to hold annual public hearings and review of the transition policy. And a key component of that was to develop an annual report as well as have public hearings and and share that progress to date. A key thing that I want to share with you all is that based on each review, the Board of County Commissioners has the ability to make adjustments to the transition policy. And this is pretty explicitly outlined in the cropland policy. So we have this tool to be able to continue to monitor things and make adjustments as we collect more information and more data. Again, this is an area where we believe we've made moderate progress. Public hearings were held in 2018 and 2019, but 2020 really threw a wrench into the whole deal due to COVID. Most of the public hearings were canceled. And again, we had some pretty significant staff turnover. So we didn't hold a public hearing on this specific topic in 2020. Today's meeting is really intended to provide a review of the transition efforts to date and share staff recommendations on this issue. As I mentioned, the county has invested over a million dollars these past few years in order to identify economically viable alternatives to the GE crops. We hired Mad Agriculture in 2019 to help our farmers find those alternatives to GE and they had come up with a two-pronged approach. Identify specialty crops to alternatives to replace corn and a straight replacing of GE corn with non-GE corn. The Mad Ag has continued to work with a number of our farmers to run field trials these last couple of years to gain additional information, insight and understanding of what it really takes to move the needle in this transition effort. The county has continued to offer economic incentives to farmers going organic. And we have seen pretty active tenant participation in those field trials with Mad Ag in efforts to identify new markets and economically viable alternatives to these crops. Though the cropland policy or through the cropland policy, rather, the county has made a commitment to the farmers to help protect the viability of agriculture in Boulder County. We are in year two of a two-year study and thus far we have not been able to identify an economically viable market for our farmers that are growing GE crops. The costs to produce clean package, store and deliver those niche markets negate any price premium that crops could be sold for. And and through our field trial work, we've not been a we've not found a way yet to replace the approximately 1,200 acres of GE corn with a specialty crop. Current market demand for alternative crops is less than the acreage being grown in corn. And specifically last year, we had a one of our farmers grow nine acres of a heritage wheat as a crop alternative to GE corn, only to discover that that wheat yield was greater than the entire demand in the for heritage wheat in the state of Colorado. So like anything, if there are no markets to sell products, farmers can't grow. And we need these markets in order for our farmers to be successful. On the sugar beet side, at this point, we've not been able to identify any apparent replacements to sugarbeets since there are no non-GE seed options and ceasing cultivation of sugarbeets is is really not an option since our farmers are contractually obligated to fulfill their shares under their contracts with Western Sugar. Farmers are not able to retire their shares and selling them or giving them away is been proved proved to be incredibly difficult given the current depressed market value of beet shares. Next slide. While we've not been able to identify these economically viable markets these past couple of years, the upcoming mandatory food labeling may influence consumer decisions moving forward. This was developed by the USDA and the rule established a really a new national mandatory bioengineered food disclosure standard which requires food manufacturers, importers and other entities that label food for retail sale to disclose information about bioengineered foods and bioengineered food ingredients. This went into effect as a voluntary effort on January 1st, 2020 and will become mandatory on January 1st, 2022. It's at this time, it's really unknown what, if any, impact this is going to have on consumer decisions when buying food, but this is something that we're going to continue to monitor in the coming years. And again, we'll just continue to monitor this moving forward. So this arrives at our recommendations. And I'm going to go into a little bit more detail with these recommendations. And these were the recommendations that staff posted back on October 1st. Next slide. The phase out of neonic is something that we want to we're recommending. Neonics really target a specific neural receptor in insects like corn rootworm and the beet curly top virus. Beet curly top is a virus with the ability to infect a lot of different plant species, including tomatoes and peppers. And that could negatively impact small farm producers. So this is, you know, pretty, pretty big deal. Neonics are typically applied as a leaf spray or on soil or is more commonly used as a seed coating. At this point in time, ag staff are not aware of neonics being applied as a leaf spray or on soil on Boulder County Parks and Open Space lands, but we are aware of them being used as a seed coating on both corn and sugarbeets. Next slide. Our next recommendation is focusing on soil health. There are really five essential principles of soil health. And this is really described by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Each of these principles has a role in helping to protect soil and these practices will become specific goals within each farm operating plan with staff and farmers working together to identify appropriate measures for each property. This is going to be a pretty significant effort for us in 2022 and our goal is to really develop a robust and comprehensive soil health program next year and incorporate that into all of our operating plans on those leased lands. The program would include a grading system for current soil health practices as well as recommendations for management changes. Depending on the severity of soil health concerns, some improvements in management practices may be required if that particular farmer wants to continue their lease. So this is something that's going to be front and center for us next year. And and really critically important, some of the benefits of soil health are really around helping to decrease nutrient inputs, helping with weed suppression, helping retain moisture in the soil. And most, I think most importantly, from a climate change standpoint is increasing carbon sequestration opportunities. So again, this is going to be a central theme for us starting next year. As we think about this comprehensive approach to agriculture, soil health, again, is just one component of this larger interwoven farm management system. While this is just one piece of a larger system, it really does help contribute to these other components. As I mentioned, soil health can help with retaining moisture in soil, which which helps with water efficiency when irrigating crops. Through soil health, we we can help reduce the number of inputs that are needed to to manage pests. So we really speak to this integrated pest management piece of this. So having robust and really healthy soil really has a compounding benefit for the agricultural community. Next slide. This slide here is really meant to sort of compare different soil health practices. The the left the image on the left is really representative of what no soil health consideration looks like. It indicates significant soil disturbance, making it subject subject to pretty severe wind and water erosion. If we reflect on those five principles we just discussed, the picture on the left really doesn't achieve any of those objectives. When you compare that with an image on the right, and this is a really good example. It hits every each one of the five soil health principles, plant diversity, cover crops. There's really no soil disturbance. There's a lot of living material and you know, the crop could be later be grazed with livestock. So this is where we want to move to with our soil health program moving forward. Our third recommendation is around the cropland policy and the bottom line is we would like to allow the growing of GE corn and sugarbeets as described in the 2012 version of the cropland policy, which states Boulder County will in general only allow the planting of GE crops on county open space cropland when the likely demonstrable benefits from the planting of a federally approved GE crop will surpass the known and potential risks associated with the adoption of the GE technology. The 2012 cropland policy also outlines a pathway for approving new GE technologies. The 2017 cropland version of the cropland policy also leaves open an avenue to continue to look at GE traits, especially as they look at drought tolerance and or increased nutrient value. So this is again, kind of a central theme for us here. Next slide. The last recommendation that we have is to amend the cropland policy. As I had mentioned before, the the cropland policies are handbook for how agricultural lands are managed and our tenants are required to follow this policy. So having clarity in this document really helps to ensure that everyone is clear on things that we're trying to achieve. The cropland policy itself is a approximately 65 pages and a complex mix of background information, draft operating procedures, policy, and in some cases contradictory information. Our goal is to clean up this document to present the language in a way so that the policy intent is clear to the reader. We'd focus background information at the beginning of the document rather than spreading it out throughout each section. We'd like to remove language that appears to be contradictory in nature and remove those items such as draft standard operating procedures that you typically don't find in public policy documents. Redline versions of the proposed amendments would be made available for public review in early November. And public feedback and input would then be incorporated, reviewed and shared with the Board of County Commissioners prior to your meeting on December 7th. Next slide. So as of last Thursday, we had received 173 comments. I know each of you have been reading each one of those 173 comments, but the the key themes that we've been able to glean from those public feedbacks are really good mix of requesting that we keep the GMO phase out. There's a group of folks that are asking to reverse the GMO phase out. There's a group of folks that are rallying around supporting soil health. And some other interested folks are asking that we eliminate pesticide usage. So again, this is a summarization of the key themes that we've heard from public feedback, but I know each of you are reading the individual comments. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Next slide. So based on all of the feedback that we've received from our first published report back in October 1st, we would like to revise or amend our first recommendation. One of the key things that came to our attention was the fact that sugarbeets only come with neonic coated seeds. Given the contractual obligations that our sugar beet growers have with Western Sugar, we'd like to amend our first recommendation to continue the phase out of neonics, but allow neonic coated seeds for sugarbeets only. Our other recommendations remain unchanged. One of the concerns that we have with this is that by not allowing those sugar beet farmers to use the neonic coated seeds, they would be in violation of their contractual obligations and likely put many, if not all of them out of business. Or be required to pay pretty substantial non-delivery charges, which could run in the hundreds of thousands of dollars depending on the farmer. So we're mindful of that. And so thus we're remending our first recommendation to allow unique coated seeds for sugarbeets only. Excellent. So next steps in this process, we're here today for the joint public hearing. As Commissioner Jones shared at the beginning, on October 28th, the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee will be the The um Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee will be deliberating based on staff recommendations as well as the public testimony today. And developing a recommendation for board consideration. Um all of that will be again presented and shared with the board on November fourth. Where the board will then deliberate on this issue and provide direction to staff. Once we get direction from the board on the fourth, we will amend the cropland policy to reflect those policy directions. And post that for public review on November eighth. Um we'll then have about two or so weeks of public comment. And then we'll incorporate those comments through a redline version into an updated or amended cropland policy. For your review and consideration on December seventh. And with that, um we will open it up for questions. And um we do have a number of folks here today to help address any questions that you may have. Uh we have Adrian Card from C S U Extension. We have Tanner Starbird from Mad Ag. Uh Dr. Lisa Blacker, who is a pesticide safety instructor at Colorado State University. And we also have Jesse Rounds and Sabrina Torres from um our C P P division. As well as uh Therese, Cassandra and myself. So thank you all very much and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Uh nicely done. Um and I I will mention that we'll take a bio break at about four thirty. Unless I get a hand raised from a POSAC or board member of it that needs a bio break before then, about five minute bio break. Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, either way, I I think we're both saying yes.
Yes.
So um maybe I'll start us off and and uh appreciate, Mike, thank you uh for being here, for presenting. Thanks to all the uh Parks and Open Space ag folks who've been uh putting a lot of work into getting us here for this conversation. And I appreciate the, just kind of the introductory comments. And I just want to make a a quick statement. I have some opportunities for kind of throughout this afternoon. Um and on the other dates that you talked about on the timeline, I would love to, not right now, but a- again, maybe middle of this session. As well as the end, go through that timeline for the public about when the next opportunity is to participate, how people can be engaged. Uh knowing that we started at three in the afternoon during the workday, so folks may not um you know, may not be here. And I can see people kind of jumping in and jumping out. So just um to support folks who are going to be in and out of this meeting, that might be helpful. So just a suggestion. And then uh this crop, you know, just for folks who are watching the cropland policy. To me, I'm looking at this as an internal policy um just starting in January as. Uh a policy, just like every other policy that as commissioners we are looking at, we're reviewing, we're asking questions about. We're um you know, everything from our intergovernmental agreements with our neighboring cities and towns. As well as like, you know, land use codes and other policies, including employment requirements, et cetera. And so when uh anything is brought to our attention around, hey, we've got to make a decision. Or there's a deadline coming up this year or even next year, et cetera. Putting that into the line of what do we need to be addressed and what questions do we need to be asking? So appreciate staff support to to uh help inform. And certainly the tours out on open space and the ability to to continue learning and and on this topic. So a couple of the questions that I have, uh and and maybe, Mike, you can help us direct who might be the person to respond. But the first one I just had to clarify. And I want to respond to a couple of the comments to, because you just addressed it. There's, there were a few people and and I did get a chance to read through the the hundred and seventy three comments and really appreciate community members, neighbors. Um experts, farmers um who who know the land and and can share their stories, taking the time to engage in this process in that way. One of the questions that's come up in a few different places was about just paying off regarding the sugar beet. Uh contracts and and quote unquote, just paying those off. And I'm wondering if anybody has any information about what a real cost to that would be. Because there's different figures that have been suggested in those comments. And also heard doing the presentation, which was a concern that I had as well as, you know, does that create a legal issue? In violation of contracts for our ag tenants.
Uh that's a great question. I don't, I'll ask maybe Conrad to speak to the the legal aspect of the the contracts. Based on our uh calculations. The rough cost would be about a quarter million dollars per year, each year. Um to quote unquote, buy out um those sugar beet uh shares.
Okay.
So that'd be a quarter million dollar cost to Parks and Open Space.
Thank you. And one of the other questions I had on. Let's see here, it was under the topic of soil health. Do you have or does the team, um is there anyone on the, in the the virtual meeting today? Listening to your presentation, I'm just curious about how y'all might be anticipating that leases. Could be affected by new plans. It sounded like part of the next, the focus in the recommendation was to continue focusing on soil health. But really push that to a new level in twenty twenty two and beyond. And if I heard that correctly, there could be changes to those leases. Is that correct? Maybe I should start there.
Uh the goal again is to work with our farmers as we develop the soil health program. Our our goal is to continue to work with our farmers next year to develop the program and really start to operationalize that. And uh our intent is to develop a a scorecard or ranking system so that we can get some understanding of. What the soil health conditions look like now. And those uh soil health, those properties that are really good soil health. Um you know, we're, they're doing all the right things, then great. Those farmers that maybe there's the soil health is below uh average or not where we would want it to be. We'd want to work with them first um to bring their soil health practices up to, you know, average or above. And after some period of time, if we're, farmers are not able to do that or if they're unwilling to work with us. Then I I I think we'd probably need to make some uh decisions to go in a different direction.
Okay, and those, all of those different pieces will be included in the. Cropland policy language that will be decided on this year in December, or that would just be. Work that you're going to present in the next annual review that's part of the policy.
Great question. Our intent is to not include all of those specifics in the cropland policy. That would be a a basically an operational document that Parks and Open Space staff would use. And incorporate into the individual farm operating plans with with each of our our farmers. So the cropland policy would still be at sort of a that thirty thousand foot level um to give us general policy direction. And then the more specifics tactical things on how we implement the policy, one of those would be that soil health scorecard.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. And I saw Cassandra Schnarr um pop on. And so I just want to give you an opportunity if there was something you'd like to respond to as well.
Uh right, just adding to what Mike was saying, that that this is um our soil health program is, you know, it's not developed yet. But as we're developing it, we'll develop it in communication with our tenant farmers. Uh and it's really geared towards helping them um add to their practices. It's not any kind of punitive something as in, you know, you're not using good soil health practices, therefore we're dinging you in some way. But but a conversation to say like, okay, as we look at these principles of soil health. How can we incorporate that on your particular piece of property that you're leasing? How does it fit into your operation? You know, in some instances, it would, you know, say uh disturbing the soil less would mean no till. In others, it would mean uh reduced tillage or something like that. So really using those principles to hone in on which practices fit which farm operations.
Okay, thank you. And if you don't mind just your name and your title as we get going, will be helpful for all of us.
Oh sure, yeah, I'm Cassandra Schnarr and I'm an agricultural resources specialist with Parks and Open Space Agricultural Division.
Thank you. Uh I have one other question and just to, I feel like it might be helpful to just get us all on the same page. In regards to the the first recommendation that then you talked about doing a uh an amendment to the recommendation from staff. In regards to pesticide and I'm reading through the comments and um hearing from folks already. Can you, will you just clarify what we're talking about for number one with that amended recommendation pesticide? There's conversations in the comments about pesticide, herbicide, that seed coating. What is being encompassed in the recommendation, the final recommendation, I should say?
Great question. So the the intent of the amended recommendation, number one, is to phase out. Neonicodoneide pesticides, so that's the the soil, the the sprays as well as seed coatings. Except for. Those that are used on sugar beets. And that's in part because uh our sugar beet farmers are contractually ob- obligated to grow sugar beets. And while there are twenty five different varieties of seeds that they can grow, they all contain neonic coated seeds. And as as my understanding is that um Western Sugar is continuing to research um non-neonic coated seeds. But at this point in time, um they have not been approved through their pretty arduous approval process. Or I should say rigorous.
Okay. Uh I am, I have a couple of other questions, but I would love to. Give my fellow commissioners an opportunity to respond to as we may have, we may have some of the similar questions. So thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, maybe, maybe I'll um jump in now and um. First, I want to thank staff for all the work you've put into this. I want to thank the tenant farmers for um taking your time. And uh allowing us to come visit your land and see your practices. I want to thank everybody who has uh written comments. Um I too read all of those comments. Um I want to make sure I'm well informed as we um consider staff's recommendations. And I also want to thank POSAC for joining us here. And um uh so that we all hear the same thing. And I think that's really important um as we consider the staff's recommendation. Um I I do have a number of questions and I I know we're all anxious to hear from the public. And and get public input, but I feel I need, there's some things I need to understand a little bit better. So that um when we reconvene uh in a public meeting to hear POSAC recommendation. And to make our own decision, um I just need to make sure I understand everything fully. And um so. Um I don't know where to, I I wrote these things down and they're not in the right order. I think I'm going to start with your, your recommendation on um. Ending the um ban on um this roundup ready corn. And sugar beets, because I, as I understand it, other forms of genetically engineered crops would be allowed. Subject to staff approval based on the criteria that are in the cropland policy. But um it's and and I think staff considered whether to suggest that we extend it. And I and I did see that originally in two thousand nineteen, staff had recommended to the county commissioners. That it be extended, I think, to twenty twenty three for that phase out. Because uh markets had not been developed and there hadn't been sufficient time to determine whether there was an alternative crop. And the commissioner was elected to provide only two growing seasons to um to figure out whether this transition was going to work. So my question is, just based on everything that has happened here since basically since two thousand sixteen. In which we've been working on this transition. Do you, i- i- is there any reason to think that if we extended this um several years? That we could find an economically viable alternative crop for these tenant farmers?
Based on the two years of data that we've been um collecting through the Mad Ag research. Um right now, we're, we're not seeing a a trend that is gonna. For alternative crops to replace the twelve hundred acres of approximately twelve hundred acres of corn that we, that are being grown on Boulder County Parks and Open Space Land annually. Um that's a lot of niche markets uh for new crops. And and we're just not seeing a trend in a direction that would be favorable to um to accommodate that requi- uh that that concept. Could it be done? It it's certainly within the realm of possibility, but based on the uh, again, the two years of information that we've collected thus far. Uh we're not seeing uh an economically viable alternative.
Okay, thank you. And so. I if we um. If if we didn't follow staff's recommendation and if we did decide to go ahead and transition. Boulder County um ag land away from roundup ready corn at least. Um. What um based on what what you've been trying to ascertain as far as a marketable crop. Would we, what do you, would we lose these tenant farmers? I I guess what I'm wondering about, it's sort of a similar question to Commissioner Loach means about the financial cost to Boulder County. I saw in the cropland policy and I think in your staff comments as well. That we would be obligated to uh purchase the irrigation equipment and perhaps other investments. So um I guess I'm wondering, would um, you know. Is, are there non-G E corn crops? Could the, could the parcels be uh broken up into smaller units? That might be more suited for something other than broad acre farming? I I know some of the comments suggested that um, you know, there's high value vegetables and things like that. That could be grown on this land. Um what would happen to this land? That, you know, the two thousand, three thousand acres or so that we're talking about here.
It's it's a great clarification question and under staff recommendation three, our intent is to continue to allow. The growing of G E corn, um both roundup ready and the BT corn that were, that was authorized for use. Under the two thousand twelve cropland policy. So we, we do want to continue to allow the growing of G E, those two corn, G E corns on Boulder County Parks and Open Space Land.
No, I understand that, but if we were to go in a different direction. Um um which I believe the previous commissioners did as well. Uh went in a different direction from staff's recommendation and POSAC's recommendation. Um if we also were to go in a different direction, what would we be facing um with this land in Boulder County? Uh would, what would happen to the tenant farmers on this land?
So through the the research that Mad Ag's been working on, we, we are aware of non um G E varieties available for corn. Um I I think it would be a a transition period for those tenants. There would be a a learning curve. And and probably some years where maybe they're not as successful as previous years as they continue to to go through that learning curve. For a crop like corn, you really get one crop a year. Um and you know, our farmers historically are always trying new things. Um and trying to tinker to find how to to best optimize their crop, how to minimize the the resources that they need to put into the crops. Um but the bottom line is they get one crop a year, really. And and so lessons that they learned in one year can then be applied for the next year. But then, you know, maybe different weather conditions, weather events, which may um really change how things go. So uh this would be definitely a a pretty significant transition um for them. I if the 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 commissioners decided to go in a different direction than what staff is recommending.
Okay, and it looks like, oh, we've got a couple of hands up here. Um and I'll let the, the chair decide how we want to handle that.
Well, I'll let Mike decide how he wants to handle that.
Okay, we'll start with Cassandra then Adrian.
Please remind us who you are and what you do.
Sure, I am Cassandra Schnarr. I'm an agricultural resource specialist with Parks and Open Space um Re- uh Agricultural Division. So just adding to what Mike is saying, um a lot of these tenant farmers that are on the larger acreage. Uh many of these properties have center pivot irrigation, so we've already invested, you know. Tens of thousands, if not over a hundred thousand dollars on each of these large pivots um to facilitate. Uh crop growing on there. So that's, that's another consideration. crop growing on there. So that's, that's another consideration is that we've already invested in ensuring that we can have large acreage types of operations on these lands. And moving, shifting things to smaller crops, specialty crops or vegetables, things like that requires a different skill set, a different set of machinery, all kinds of things like that. So it's, it's, all farming is not the same. So it's changing is not just as easy as, you know, planting something different next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Adrian?
Hello, Commissioners. Adrian Card with Colorado State University Extension. I'm an agriculture extension agent in Boulder County and have been for almost the past 18 years and some of the remaining staff that went through all of this process originally. One of the first things I want to bring to your attention, I think that this has been shared with you. And its date looks back into the past, but I think it's still relevant. I worked with Park staff to publish, to produce, to author a paper, "The Economic and Environmental Implications of Cropping Systems in Boulder County", which we delivered to the BOC June 16th of 2015. And we highlighted environmental and economic impacts. And I think in clarity, your question, if we were to consider conventional corn, we documented clearly at the time that the community values in the county around reduced toxicity and reduced greenhouse impacts. A movement to conventional corn was a step towards, compared to GE strip till corn, was a step towards more toxicity in the, in the environment, given the herbicide use, insecticide use needed for that conventional corn production. It increased the greenhouse gas equivalent pounds emissions. It also increased the water loss from soil, which is important in a climate uncertain future that we are most judicious with water use. And it also reduced profitability per acre. So I think that that is probably, you know, maybe we could update those numbers a bit, but probably still representative in terms of broad themes. What we've seen too over the years is the strong intent and understandable value in the county of the desire to increase organic acres. And I think that was the assumption previously is that producers affected by this policy would transition to organic. And we've seen in the face of incentives offered by the Parks Department that that, that hasn't moved and Mike's presentation noted that. I can speak intimately to the, the issues around the public value of more food crops, of more directly consumable produce. And what we we know is in the county, it is, it is hard to start up a produce farm. I've run Colorado Building Farmers, a Beginning Farmer Development Program in the county since 2007. Some attendees here today have helped with that, with that, that program over the years. We've noted beginning farmer losses. Many of them wanted to start up in produce. We've, like many small farm businesses, we've seen maybe an 80% business failure rate in the first five years. If we lay on top of that, the issues around housing issues in the county, which you guys are intimately aware of, to how, produce operations and our high touch operations need more staff to pull them off. So the question remains, the cost of living in Boulder County and the cost of housing. Starting up a produce farm seems challenging and something we need to address as a community, but it's not a an immediately viable pivot for the existing land. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian and Cassandra. And just one, a quick follow up point to help kind of provide some perspective or context. The average organic farm size in Boulder County is about 43 acres. The average non-organic farm in Boulder County is a little over 200 acres.
Let me just digest that. And then I have another question. 40 acres, you said?
Forty-three.
Okay. So I, I wonder, I guess, so a lot of the comments and the concern understandably about Roundup Ready corn and sugar beets has to do with pollinators. And I think regarding neonics as well, concerned about what is the effect on pollinators? So, you know, folks, I don't think people oppose, oppose this change because they oppose genetically engineered crops. It's and as a matter of fact, a lot of them support drought tolerant genetic engineering and other things like that. But it's, it's the effect on pollinators. Can you speak to, or maybe there's somebody that you mentioned that's an expert here? Can you speak to the health of pollinators in Boulder County? In general, or can you speak a little bit more to the effect of neonicotinoids and glyphosate on pollinators?
If Cassandra can help me answer that question.
Hi, again, I'm Cassandra Schnar, Agricultural Resources Specialist in Parks Open Space Agricultural Division. So as far as let's first say I'm a soil scientist. I'm not an expert in pesticides or herbicides. We do not have an expert on pesticides or herbicides on our staff. So I've been doing the research, but we can always ask maybe some of our other experts as well. Or if you have some specific questions, I can do some more research and get you certainly some more detailed information. It's my understanding that glyphosate, and I think there is some discussion in about how glyphosate might impact pollinators or soil microbes and things. It's glyphosate really targets a metabolic pathway within a plant that stops that plant from growing. So an essential metabolic pathway, it stops it. It's humans, mammals don't have that same pathway, but some microbes, maybe all microbes do. So potentially there could be some, some impacts on microbes or I think, and I can look this up for you, might also impact insects. So, so that's the glyphosate portion. Glyphosate though, as far as glyphosate within the soil and affecting, say, the soil microbial communities, it doesn't stick around in the soil very long. So looking at herbicides, we can look at, say, the labeling on a herbicide and it will tell us how quickly we can plant something in the soil so that we can, you know, not be affected by that herbicide. For glyphosate, you can plant something immediately. So kind of indicates that it's not sticking around in the soil. Neonicotinoids are a different issue. So neonicotinoids are water soluble. So on a seed coating, it's a very minuscule amount, but on the seed coating, the whole point is it's water soluble. It can go into the plant tissues. And thus any like, say sucking insects would then be, you know, killed by the pesticide. The concern is that some residual amount of that might be in the pollen and thus affect pollinators. So with our sugar beets, though, sugar beets are a plant that has a two-year life cycle. So they don't flower until the second year. But we harvest them at the end of the first year. So as far as affecting directly pollinators, any of the neonicotinoids inside of that you know, sugar beet coating that goes into the plant, it would not then get into a pollen that would affect pollinators directly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I didn't know that.
And does that answer your question well enough?
Yeah, I think it does. Well, I also asked, maybe this is something we don't know about, or maybe there's somebody else that's going to testify later, but just the, the health of pollinators in Boulder County currently.
So previously, prior to COVID, we did have a volunteer pollinator monitoring program where we had volunteers who were going out counting the numbers of pollinators in different areas, you know, at different timeframes and also identifying the different types of pollinators. So, so we do have a track record of knowing about the pollinators. It's my understanding that we have a, you know, a very healthy pollinator population, native pollinator population within Boulder County. There was a study done a couple of years ago by some researchers at DU that looked at our at our populations. And I think, and I'd have to double check this, I think they found we actually had a more robust population of pollinators currently, say, when the study was done, maybe 2019, than we did when a similar study was done in 1907.
Wow, okay. That's, that's all the human settlement and the flowering plants that we have. We've changed the landscape a lot since.
Yes, and all of these things are very intertwined, you know, nothing, nothing is in isolation. We also have Lisa Blacker here. She has her hand raised. She's from CSU and can probably help answer some of these questions.
Yeah, I raised my hand while Cassandra was speaking and so.
Lisa, can you identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, I'm Lisa Blacker. I'm the pesticide safety educator at Colorado State University. I raised my hand while Cassandra is speaking, so I may be reiterating some of what she said. And I want to direct your, like a pesticide label, any label of a pesticide, whether it's a seed treatment or an herbicide or what have you, will have specific recommendations or precautionary statements for pollinators if they are known to be an issue. And so something like glyphosate does not have a pollinator advisory on it. And there's also specific instructional language on the labels that will tell you to avoid certain application practices. If it is a pollinator concern, for example, don't spray when bees are present, if there's blooming plants in the field, for example. So blooms are very important to pollinators. As Cassandra mentioned, sugar beets aren't blooming because we're not growing them for seed. And if weeds are properly managed in the field and not allowed to bloom, that also is less incentive for a pollinator to enter that sugar beet field.
Thank you. Maybe Lisa, you want to stay on here because my next question is about neonicotinoids and what alternatives are available? It's the, the corn, well, you know what, what it's used for. Are, are there, are there other alternatives available that would address the, the problem? And not be water soluble and show up in the water and, and threaten pollinators?
So I'll, I'm Lisa Blacker. I don't know if I need to introduce myself again, but I will. I'm from Colorado State University. I'm the pesticide safety educator. So speaking very specifically about the neonicotinoid coated seed. To my knowledge, the alternatives that I've found recommended are things that are older chemistries. So these are things like 4-8 thymet, just an organophosphate carbamate list of pesticides. So yes, there are potential alternatives. The problem with these alternatives is that they're, they carry their own risks. So I can look up for you. I have a little piece favor here with some water solubility information, but I do want to point out something like 4-8 thymet, one of those is the active and one of those is the brand name. Is a restrict, a federally restricted use material. And that is because of acute human toxicity for three, three of the four routes of exposure and also for avian, avian issues, avian hazards. So you know, there's no good, at the moment, to my knowledge, there's no real good off the shelf replacement that is that to me looks any better. I know that there is some research being done right now in my department to identify alternatives to neonic treated seeds. I believe that that research is in, in the early stages. So I can't really comment on, you know, what, what is going to work. But I do know that research is ongoing, collaboration with CSU and the, and the Western Sugar.
It looks like Tanner has his hand up. So Tanner, please introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Tanner Starbar with Mad Agriculture. On the topic of alternatives to neonicotinoid seed coatings, I wanted to offer that there are a couple more out there. The primary alternatives to the non, to the neonic seed coating, one would be a raw seed with no coating, just the raw seed out in the field. Another alternative is a biological stimulant. This is a evolving industry, maybe five to 10 years at this point. It has a lot of interest across the nation, but it is still in its relative infancy rather relative to the chemical pesticide approach. This is instead looking at, can we stimulate the health of the seed and its surrounding biological community so that that seed can thrive despite potential pest pressures? This is an alternative approach that is out there, farmers are interested in, but does not have the same widespread adoption as neonics have in the past. So farmers are tentatively interested broadly in that alternative. It's worth mentioning that there are also other classes of insecticide seed coatings, some of which are used within the county. Other than neonic seed coatings, including diamides, they, instead of attacking the neuropathways, they more so are looking at the, and addressing muscular issues. And so they're addressing the pests through that. So it is not affecting neuropathways, but it inhibits insects' ability to move. So that's a different class. That is not a neonicotinoid, but it's a different pesticide. Different set of issues for surrounding environment. So those are some other alternatives to the neonics.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think I've got three screens here. One, I think, well, just something to clarify here. I'm a little confused about the relationship between BT corn and the Roundup Ready. Can you have BT resistant corn that is not genetically engineered to be Roundup Ready?
I'm going to again ask Cassandra to address that question.
Sure, Cassandra Schnar, Parks Open Space Agricultural Division. So the genetically modified or genetically engineered traits can be stacked. So you can have more than one trait per, you know, variety of seed, or you can have them separate. So BT is different than Roundup Ready. So the Roundup Ready corn is genetically modified so that the, when you spray Roundup in a field, it is not susceptible. It's herbicide tolerant to Roundup. So BT corn is something separate. It is the, it takes genetic material from a bacterium that is an insecticide and that is placed. I'm not a geneticist, so this is a very, you know, fuzzy explanation, but it, the corn is genetically modified with that bacterium so that the corn itself expresses the insecticide. So there's some confusion in our crop land policy that refers to BT corn along with Roundup Ready corn as being insecticide dependent. BT corn is not insecticide dependent. It's, it's not made to be used in conjunction with any kind of pesticide or herbicide. It produces its own pesticide. Adrian Card might be able to explain it better.
So I understand that. That wasn't my question. I understand.
Sorry.
No, I understand those are different traits for different purposes. My question is whether, whether you, when you get BT corn seeds, it, whether you can get them that are BT resistant and not genetically engineered to allow use of Roundup. Like if we say no more BT. Like, if we say no more, no more Roundup resistant corn, does that necessarily mean that farmers cannot grow BT resistant corn?
It should, we should be able to get BT resistant corn without any other stacked traits.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. Thanks. And I think that's probably everything I have and for, for staff, I may have some more questions based on the testimony that will be here, but I think that's it. Thank you.
I have one other question, and it may be helpful if you don't mind, Mike, to, I don't know who's running the slides. But just to go back, the question, there was one that had a breakdown of the acres and then the, let's see, so 77% other Parks and Open Space Crop Land.
Cassandra, can you pull up slide five, please?
Thank you both.
Next one, the next one down at the pie chart.
Yep, thank you. So can you just, I understand the 6%, 1%, 10%, etc., but other Parks and Open Space Crop Land, who's, what's happening with that land? Because this, this conversation is talking about our ag tenants, which in one of the documents, it looked like there was approximately 60 tenants. What about this other 77%?
The other 77% is a makeup of a lot of different things, including wheat, alfalfa, barley, table food, rye, cover crops, sunflowers, beans, perennial vegetation, so a whole range of things.
And that percentage is, are those also ag tenants that we're talking about today, or it's just the other?
That's a different group of ag tenants. The, we have nine tenants that are currently growing GE corn and sugarbeets, and the rest are growing these other things like the alfalfa, oats, sunflowers, beans, etc.
Okay, I just want to clarify who is who and what is what when we talk about the thousands of acres of ag land and Parks and Open Space managed land here. So, okay, thank you.
So do any of the POCAC members have questions? I'm not hearing that. I didn't see any raised hands. Just wanted to offer that. I had questions similar to Marta and Claire, and I'm anxious to get on to hearing from the public, so let's do that. We're gonna take a break in about 15 minutes, so what I'll do is probably call on the two, first two pool speakers and get those done and then take a break. So we are starting with Peter Newman. Please remember, state your name and your address before you speak. And you have nine minutes and you'll see the timer and it'll hit, you'll hear this thing time. And a little bing, it was much, much kinder than the buzzer that we have in the hearing room. But that, that means your time's up and you need to wrap up. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Matt Jones. So my name is Pete Newton. I live in Boulder. I wanted to thank the two speakers that pulled time with me, so I'll talk for up to nine minutes in total. I am an associate professor in the Environmental Studies Program at CU Boulder, where I teach classes and conduct research on sustainable food systems, land use, and rural livelihoods. My PhD is in environmental science. I want to say I have, I have no personal economic or ideological stake in this debate. I'm here because I'm a proponent of evidence-based decision-making in public policy. I also believe in being consistent. If I want climate change policy and pandemic response policy to be based on the best available evidence, which I do, then I should hold the same standards and principles for the development of agricultural policy. As such, my testimony here draws almost entirely on rigorous, published, peer-reviewed scientific research. I've already emailed a list of references to each commissioner, and those references support every substantive claim that I will make. Many of the research papers that I will cite are meta-analyses, which systematically synthesize the findings of an entire body of research, often many hundreds of studies. As such, meta-analyses are often considered the strongest form of evidence. So what I'd like to do is make three statements and briefly support each with examples and evidence. So my first statement is that there is not strong evidence of environmental or human health risks from genetically engineered crops. The National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine conducted a major comprehensive review of the scientific literature on genetically engineered crops, which it published in 2016. A quote from that report, first on human health, quote, "The committee concluded that no differences have been found that implicate a higher risk to human health safety from these GE foods than from their non-GE counterparts," end quote. And second, on environmental health, quote, "The committee found no conclusive evidence of cause and effect relationships between GE crops and environmental problems," end quote. Second statement is that there is strong evidence of sustainability benefits from genetically engineered crops. I'll give three quick examples of such sustainability benefits. First, herbicide tolerant and insect tolerant crops have often led to higher yields. A meta-analysis of 21 years of field data found that GE maize increased yields by an average 10% and up to 26% relative to non-GE maize. All else being equal, higher yields mean that less land is needed to produce the same amount of food. Using less land to produce our food is a critical component of reducing pressure for the continued conversion of natural ecosystems into farmland. Second example, crops that are genetically engineered to be insect tolerant dramatically reduce insecticide use. This is true more or less by definition, since insect pests are killed when they eat the insect tolerant GE plant without the need to spray insecticides. A different meta-analysis that looked at insecticide use concluded that adoption of insect-resistant genetically engineered crops had led to an average 42% less pesticide use. Interestingly, there's also compelling evidence that insect tolerant genetically engineered crops can have landscape-wide benefits by reducing the local population of pest insects. That confers benefits on neighboring non-GE growing farmers. A third and final example, a viable model of farming needs to be economically sustainable as well as environmentally sustainable. The meta-analysis I just mentioned that reported on insecticide use also looked at profits and found that adoption of GE technology has increased farmer profits by an average 68%. And then my third statement is that public perceptions and beliefs about genetically engineered crops often do not align with scientific knowledge and understanding. First, in a 2015 poll by the Pew Research Center that surveyed a nationally representative sample, only 37% of US adults believed that it is safe to eat genetically modified foods, compared to 88% of scientists who belonged to the American Association for the Advancement of Science. That 51-point gap between public and scientists is considerably larger than the 37-point gap between the same constituents as to whether climate change is mostly due to human activity. And second, a recent controlled experimental study conducted by another professor at CU Boulder, which also used a nationally representative sample, found that, quote, "As extremity of opposition to and concern about genetically modified foods increases, objective knowledge about science and genetics decreases, but perceived understanding of genetically modified foods increases," end quote. In other words, extreme opponents of genetically engineered foods know the least, but think they know the most. That may explain some of the dissonance between lay, some laypeople's claims and perceptions about GE and the scientific evidence about GE. So while this is an emotive issue for many people, this finding leads me back to my original point, which is that agricultural sustainability policy should be based on the best available objective evidence. I've tried my best to summarize some of that evidence for you here. To recap, the scientific literature indicates that there is not strong evidence of environmental or human health risk from GE crops, that there is strong evidence of sustainability benefits from GE crops, and the public perceptions and beliefs about GE crops often do not align with scientific knowledge and understanding. My own opinion, based on that evidence, is that there is little credible scientific basis for banning GE crops in Boulder County. All farmers have to deal with pests, including weeds and insects, and there are many ways of dealing with those pests, and many farmers use combinations of tools under an integrated approach. But a non-scientific arbitrary ban on some of those tools, such as GE crop varieties, leaves farmers with fewer options. In any policy decision, one has to ask what the counterfactual scenario looks like, and taking away safe and efficient tools may force farmers to adopt more harmful or less efficient alternatives. It may be more productive to define the sustainability of any particular food production system by its outcomes rather than by its processes. Boulder County Parks and Open Spaces stated vision is to be a national leader in sustainable agriculture. One good way to lead might be by developing and adopting policy that is evidence-based and that embraces safe, effective technologies. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or by email in follow-up.
Lisa, you may still have your hand up inadvertently. You might want to learn. I don't see any questions from the folks on POCAC or the board. So we'll go to Luther Markwart for nine minutes.
Thank you. My name is Luther Markwart, and I'm the Executive Vice President of the American Sugar Beet Growers Association in Washington DC. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate today. I've spent the last 39 years representing all the sugar beet farmers in the US and have monitored sugar beet production globally during this time. While much of the world is recently waking up to the importance of sustainability and climate change, our farmers have been actively pursuing and addressing these issues for the past 20 years. Let me put this into perspective. 78% of all the sugar grown in the entire world is produced in developing countries with clearly lower labor, environmental, and sustainability standards. Of the remaining production in developed countries, the US and Canadian beet growers has used GE sugarbeets to survive economically and show the rest of the world their benefits. When we fully adopted biotechnology in 2009, we were the first producers of either beet or cane in the history of the world to take this step. Brazil, which is now the largest producer and exporter in the world, is just now commercializing biotech cane. It was our beet growers who pursued this technology for weed control, but also with a primary focus on consumers and the environment. Consumers should know that there is no difference between refined beet or cane sugar, whether it's grown organically, conventionally, or with biotechnology. Our sugar has been tested with sugar from around the world, grown by these other methods, and there simply is no difference. From an environmental perspective, by embracing biotechnology, we made a quantum leap for sustainability by providing at least 25 environmental benefits over conventional production. We have documented those improvements with the National Academy of Sciences. Reducing carbon, carbon and greenhouse gases, conserving water, and increasing soil microbial health are just the beginning of our great story. Our farmers use sophisticated technology, the best seed genetics, and the most environmentally friendly crop protection products to produce high-quality sugar for our customers. And we cannot achieve the sustainability and climate goals that the good people in Boulder County and our growers want without the right tools. It is essential that our beet growers be allowed to continue to use biotech seeds to grow their crops on county lands. We cannot turn back the clock on the progress that we have already made. With respect to neonicinoids or neonic, they are used as a seed treatment, as was noted earlier, and is essential in sugar beet production in Colorado and other states, primarily for beef fleet hoppers, root maggot, wireworms, cutworms, and leaf miners. A real example of a disaster when neonic were not used when they were needed is when the French government restricted the use in sugarbeets in 2020. It devastated producers and threatened the viability of their industry and their food security. It was so harmful to farmers that the government stepped in and reversed their decision and allowed neonic to be used once again on sugarbeets for three years. And they too are looking for alternatives, but that will take some time. Sugarbeets do not flower, as was noted earlier, in their first year, so there is frankly nothing to attract the pollinators to our plants. Without neonic, our family farmers would have to use a variety and volumes of pesticides over the top of the crop that neither our farmers or Boulder residents would embrace. There is nothing more important to our farmers than using the best tools and products available to keep plants strong and healthy and to have the least impact on the environment. Research like that that is being conducted at Colorado State University, other land-grant universities, USDA research stations, seed companies, and crop protection companies is constantly underway to help us meet our objectives, and we will embrace those tools when they become available. But in the meantime, we, if we are to sustain a domestic beet sugar industry, we must use the best and safest products available to us and allow our farmers to use the products on county property, just as we do on the 1.1 million acres across 11 states. It is essential that we all work together to be sustainable, help the environment, and feed our people with the highest quality products available. It's what we all want, and it's what we all need. I strongly encourage you to allow these producers to use the tools that have made them the best in the world at what they do. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I look forward to answering any of your questions.
Right, thank you, Luther. I'm not seeing any hands raised for questions.
Commissioner Jones, I do have one question.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. Mr., is it Markwart?
Markwart, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Do you happen to know what percentage of the sugar beet crop in Boulder County is grown on Boulder County land versus private land?
No, that, that would be a question for Mr. Schlegel or Rebecca Larson, because they have that, they, they would have that data for their particular company.
Okay, and I believe they are signed up to testify later.
Yes.
And then, and this is probably also a question for them, but when we were, Commissioner Loachimine had asked about the cost of buying out the sugar beet contracts, quarter million dollars a year. Do you know how long those contracts last?
Again, that, that is a contractual issue, and because of antitrust purposes, I can't, I am not privy to the specifics of their, their contracts. So again, that question would have to go to them.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, everybody. It is 4:30. We're gonna do a five-minute bio break. We'll be back here at 4:35. Thanks, everybody, for being part of this.
Commissioner Jones, if you're speaking, you're on you.
I was just telling Rebecca that the mute button is on the lower-left side, and I hadn't pushed. So Rebecca, you are up. Please state your name.
My name is Rebecca Larson, and I live at 1187 Windermere Circle in Longmont, Colorado. Thank you so much for your time today. I serve as Chief Scientist for Western Sugar Cooperative, and I'm a resident of Boulder County. I hold a doctorate in plant pathology, and I've had the honor of supporting sugar beet farmers for the past 22 years of my career. GMOs have revolutionized sugar beet production. Growers have increased land use efficiency. Today, they're producing over 11,000 pounds of sugar per acre compared to just 8,000 pounds of sugar per acre a decade ago. This nearly 40% increase in yield imparts significant environmental benefit. As a 2019 Lancet report on food production in the Anthropocene recognized, the number-one driver of biodiversity loss globally is unrecognized yield potential and land conversion for agricultural production. Not only have farmers realized this dramatic yield increase, they've done it using a third less water and half the fuel, so their greenhouse gas emissions are 50% what they were just a decade ago. And our soil health has quantifiably improved using GMO technology. We've documented this with comprehensive soil testing, measuring both the diversity and the activity of the soil microbiome. We have shown that glyphosate does not kill the microorganisms within the soil. The nutrient and carbon cyclers vastly increase when the soil isn't overworked, and GMOs directly enable conservation tillage for sugar beet producers, minimizing soil disturbance. These documented and quantifiable outcomes from the adoption of GMO technology have contributed to Western Sugar being the first in the Americas to be awarded the highest global sustainability ranking of 100% gold through the NGO SIDA platform. Not only that, our growers are continuing to make improvements. Farming is a very tough profession, regardless of the practices employed, and net revenues can be very tight. Even so, sugar beet growers across Boulder County and our other production regions invest over $300,000 annually out of their own pockets to advance continuous improvement by funding scientists, grad students, and research across a five-state area. They've been doing this since 2002, when the co-op was first formed. Outcomes thus far have been very successful because of subject matter experts, the farmers, in partnership with highly-trained scientists, have been in the driver's seat. Growers are building on the environmental successes imparted by better weed management, widespread adoption of conservation tillage, and improved soil health. Right now, there are farmers in Boulder County that are conducting studies funded by the NRCS to reduce nitrogen application and further reduce greenhouse gas emissions by an additional 30%. None of these continuous improvement objectives would be possible without continued access to GMO sugar beets. We are in an inherently low organic matter region of the United States exacerbated by leveling for irrigation over time. Growers are using high-carbon soil amendments to double their soil carbon content and water-holding capacity. Those amendments have long-lasting benefits on farms since GMO technology allows farmers to use conservation tillage to prevent soil erosion through irrigation and wind. Neonicotinoids are also a crucial piece of integrated pest management. They're not used prophylactically within Boulder County. Bee-curly top virus is a real and present threat along the entire front range of Colorado. It has an extremely broad host range, infecting over 300 plant species and 44 families, including hemp, which is a newly-emergent alternative host. Controlling this disease in beets helps reduce food waste across the county, since tomatoes, peppers, eggplants, and other very high-value vegetables are also susceptible to this devastating disease. 2020 was the United Nations International Year of Plant Health. Reportedly, 40% of all food waste happens on the farm due to poor disease and pest management. The neonic ban not only threatens beet, wheat, and corn production across the county, but all small-scale vegetable production in the county as well, when the pests and the disease they vector are left unchecked. Sugar beets do have native tolerance to this disease, but it's incomplete and age-dependent, so they need an additional boost to manage this disease. And of all the available products on the market, neonics are the best option. Firstly, they can be applied at a very low rate, just 24 grams per acre, compared to the other alternative, which is counter, at 9.8 pounds per acre. We can have very targeted placement, since it's seed-applied versus being applied foliarly. And the application timing at planting is far superior than application foliarly in season, since there's less beneficial insect activity at that time. There's also better specificity efficacy, since neonicotinoids only work against piercing and boring insects and are less prone to resistance development than the foliar-applied broader-spectrum active ingredients. For sugar beets, seed treatments are commercially applied to pelleted, sealed seed, and contained facilities, and growers exercise best management practices to avoid dust-off at planting, so the exposure to non-target organisms is very minimal. Furthermore, sugar beet does not flower, so it's not a food source for beneficial insects. Neonics are also not persistent. There are exhaustive studies conducted by the state of Minnesota that show no accumulation in soils from repeated use of neonicotinoids, if used only on an annual basis. And I think it's important to emphasize there's a big difference between threat and risk when it comes to these products. APAS has been screening bees, pollen, bee bread, and wax routinely since 2009, receiving over 2,000 samples per year. Less than 2% of those samples have shown any measurable amount of neonicotinoid presence or any of their byproducts. The state of Colorado has participated within this screening program and has found no detection of any neonicotinoids in the samples submitted. A recent USDA Economic Research Service report documenting 20 years of colony tracking showed significant growth in colonies in the most recent decade and a significant rebound in colony counts since the low of the industry in 2008, despite widespread use of neonicotinoids during the same time period. Lastly, a study conducted in Ontario showed no negative impact of colonies of bees reared directly in neonicotinoid-treated canola fields, showing even when exposure opportunity is high, threats are minimal. Even if there is risk of acute toxicity exists, all of this real-world data suggests exposure is extremely limited for bees, hence the overall threat is also minimal. It is time to overturn the ban on GMOs and neonicotinoids. The scientific consensus is clear. There is greater scientific consensus on GMO safety than there is for human involvement in climate change. Scientific consensus is true, whether it fits one's ideology or not. I have outlined the quantifiable and observable benefits of GMO technology right here in Boulder County. The GMO and neonic ban introduced into Boulder County open-space propland policy is behind the times. A focus on practices and labels is antiquated dogma. Like all bans, there will be unintended consequences. It's time for Boulder County to focus on outcomes, which is a far more progressive approach. I implore you to follow scientific consensus, not the fear promotion of special interests and cherry-pick data. I have seen the environmental benefits firsthand and know the stewards of the land personally. We proudly stand behind the science, and will let our data do the talking. My 22 years of on-farm expertise has me standing before you today confidently to say the peer-reviewed science and the on-farm observations show a ban on GMOs and neonicotinoids stand in the way of advancing environmental sustainability, and therefore, any slated ban of either should be removed from Boulder County open-space policy. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any questions? All right, we will go to the next person to testify, Paul Schlegel. You have nine minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners and members of POSAC. My name is Paul Schlegel, 1260 County Road, 20 and 1/2. I'm kind of in a bad spot here, get to follow all the doctors. I don't have a doctorate in anything, but I do have a couple of credentials. I'm a fourth-generation Boulder County farmer, and my family's been farming in this area for 114 years. I farm alongside my son Scott, and we hope to continue our family's tradition of sustainable and productive farming in the county into the future. Boulder farmers share a commitment to sustainability. We also hear a lot about this from Boulder's non-farming citizens, and I think it's important to understand that it's this value that we all share. I think where we may differ is in how we decide what is sustainability and how we measure it. Farming is extremely nuanced and complicated. Because of this, it can be tempting for non-farmers to focus on controlling or limiting specific inputs, like a particular pesticide that we've been talking about, or seed technologies, because that seems like a very easy way to conclude whether something is sustainable or not. However, an input-based approach to sustainability doesn't actually capture the impact of farming practice on the environment. And unfortunately, limiting farmers by taking these tools out of the toolbox frequently has an obvious backfire effect. It may actually make the practice of farming less sustainable overall. Other speakers have talked about this more, but it's important to recognize that taking away tools can create a significant sustainability barriers, because in restricting a modern pesticide, you might, for example, drastically decrease carbon sequestration and increase water usage, while not actually improving the soil health and the pollinators. The logical way to approach a commitment to sustainability is with a focus on measurable outcomes. And this should be for alternate farmers. It begins with a collaborative decision about what we consider sustainable, to be, for example, looking at soil health measures, or amount of carbon sequestration in the soil, or water usage, or polliner health, and then measuring those outcomes. Framing Boulder County's Sustainable Ag Program through measurable outcomes is a holistic, comprehensive way to bring diversity to our farmers and bring them together, and in a way feel confident that we are actually moving the needle on improving the way we grow food in our open-space lands. This requires a commitment to making that paradigm shift away from input-focused bans and toward measurable outcomes. This is the best way to work collaboratively with all of Boulder County's farmers, and will ensure accountability and progress towards our shared sustainable goals, especially as they relate to soil health, carbon sequestration, and integrated pest management. A few mornings ago, we were harvesting our genetically-hand sugar beets. Traveling through the field, I felt like I was the luckiest person in the world. All of the sophisticated equipment was working well. The sun was just coming up behind us. Off to the right were four deer grazing on a few sugar beets that we missed with a harvester. The mountains were in front of us on a stunning, crisp, clear morning. Two bald eagles were looking for breakfast, and we disturbed the rodents hiding in the field. In this sugar beet field, we harvested several test plots with different nitrogen fertilizer applications. We want to know what the least amount that can be applied and still produce the best crop. We have other test plots comparing conservation tillage to no till. Across the road beyond the other field, we have test plots comparing compost applications to no compost. We've been applying compost now for several years on all of our farms. In fact, we just finished applying 3,800 tons on 380 acres for our 22 crop. We do not take any of these practices on our farm lightly. You can't track progress until you measure the outcomes. Now, I recalled some of the comments that were posted online leading up to this hearing, and how the comments do not really reflect reality. Taking away the tools that support our farming operation would put us at definite end to our never-ending quest for improvements in soil health and sustainability, and would return us to farming methods that have been proven detrimental to the goals that we strive for. There'll be a time in the near future that the next generation will need to tend these farms. Without the use of available technology, you may lose the best talent. I ask POSAC and the commissioners to set aside all of the 2016 input bans and part of the new focus on measurable outcomes, strike Appendix 13, retire the ineffective transition plan, and instead work together on outcome-based sustainability. I would like to add a couple of comments that I just scribbled down here about some of these properties that are in the big greens area, and we have water issues that no one has brought up yet. On the farms that we farm, we need to put 50% of those acres into small grain just to make sure that we have the available storage water to continue to grow our row crops into August and September, so that the idea of splitting these larger tracts up into smaller parcels is not workable. Another thing, too, in Longmont, there's remnants of a sugar beet factory that was built there over 100 years ago. There's also a large barley elevator that sits on the north side of Longmont. There's a reason they got built in this area. Our climate is very conducive to raising barley, which is a non-GE crop that all of us, again, GE farmers don't just farm GE crops. We farm a multiple, there's multiple crops that we grow on our crops as rotation to be able to grow the best corn and sugar beet crops that we can. So that's, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, or we'll move on.
If there are any questions.
I do. Thank you, and I appreciate the patience of people who are waiting to testify here since this policy, our decision on this policy will have a major impact on Mr. Schlegel and... our decision on this policy will have a major impact on Mr. Schlegel and our other tenant farmers. And so I do have some questions, just because I need this information to make the best decision I can. So we heard a little bit from Mike Foster about the efforts to transition away from GE crops pursuant to the policy that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen and then extended in two thousand and nineteen. Could you just elaborate a little bit as a farmer on your experience in trying to meet this transition goal? What worked, what didn't work, what were the challenges?
The challenge is in my, one of my statements is the crops we grow grow well here for a reason, and that's our climate. I think we tried multiple crops, not just me, but the group. And I think Peter touched on it, that we can, we grow GE crops, but our pesticides, our insecticides, our weed pressures are so much less on the farms that we've been maintaining over the last decade or so because of GE. And I think that the thing that we found in trying to transition to, I mean, the main one was non-GE corn, that we had weed pressures that we haven't had in years. And that was a year ago. This year, that field was in a small grain crop, which again, we're back to fighting weeds in that field that would not have been there in two thousand and twenty-one that we let go in two thousand and twenty. And again, we're probably going to have those same issues in two thousand and twenty-two as we go forward. So the secret of, it's not a big secret, it's like keep your farm clean of pesticides, whether they be insects, weeds, whatever they are, and you'll be a better farmer for years to come. And still minimize the use of, you know, chemicals on your fields.
So given your family's history here, a hundred and fourteen years, you were, your family, maybe you were farming before the advent of genetically engineered seeds that to be Roundup-ready. What, how did you control weeds then?
Not as well as we do, and I think agriculture advanced through time. And I think the labor situation made a lot of changes in agriculture that probably wouldn't have happened the way in sequences they did. But there was a point in time, probably thirty, forty years ago, when there wasn't available labor, and we find that same issue today in some of the organic farms, to be able to take care of these pests. And so we got into a chemical farming a little bit more than we probably should have. And I think we learned a little bit from that, but I think the choices were not there to to, you know, eliminate some of those things. So the options weren't as big as they are today. That help?
Yeah, I know. I've heard you and some of the other farmers talk about the amount of alternative pesticides, herbicides you would have to use if you could not use the Roundup-ready. I'm just wondering if you can give us any, you know, any sense of what the alternatives are.
They're not fun, and, I mean, I put my son on an applicator that we go out and treat fields with, and I'm not the least bit concerned. Twenty-five years ago, I would be, I would have some concerns, and I don't think we want to set agriculture back to that age and time. I think we're doing things today that are, I mean, it's like I would tell anybody that's listening online, come out and see what we're doing. Put your feet out here on the ground. Look what we're doing. We can have a great conversation. My name's probably there. You can find me. Give me a call. Let's have a conversation on the farm. We can have a a learning experience probably on both sides.
So I think, thank you. I think I just have two more questions. So some of the comments that were submitted talked about the emergence of super weeds if we're using Roundup, and the weeds become resistant, that we are going to see the emergence of super weeds. Are you, are you seeing that? And what are you doing to prevent that from happening?
It's preventable. It's not preventable forever, probably, but every, probably everyone's heard of two-four-D. It's been around for a hundred years. It has weeds that will escape when you spray it on there. So there's always that risk that you're going to have weeds that escape. They don't become super weeds. They are just regular weeds that escape. There are weeds in Boulder County, when you drive around, there are some fields that have never been treated and not taken care of, that there's, I believe there are some super weeds there. But we do, we practice religiously rotation, crop rotation, where we plant corn one year, barley one year, rye one year, sugar beets one year, then we'll start the rotation over. We'll have multiple years to be able to catch any escapes, if there is such a thing. That we don't just plant sugar beets after sugar beets and use Roundup after Roundup. That is not what we do. We use very, very little Roundup on an acre, if you think about what is actually applied. I mean, if you put, and again, this isn't strictly on a sugar beet field, we may apply a Pepsi can full of Roundup on an acre of sugar beets, which is the size of a football field. So the amount of active ingredient that we actually use is very, very minimal.
Okay, thanks. And just again, going to some of the comments that were submitted that you might be able to help us understand and see from your perspective. One of the concerns about use of glyphosate is that it's an indiscriminate herbicide. And so it, well, it would kill the kinds of things that might grow between the rows, the cover crops that pollinators would be attracted to, and that it just creates a monoculture. So are you able to, are you able to use cover crops in conjunction with Roundup-ready corn?
Roundup is essential to cover crops. And again, there's a multitude of cover crops that we've tried. We have left cover crops in a growing cornfield to see what happens. We have planted cover crops in the fall and then planted sugar beets into that cover crop and used the Roundup technology to, you know, to clean up that cover crop that would be in competition with a sugar beet crop throughout the year. So you have a cover crop that's very beneficial from this time of year until the beets emerge in late April, that the cover crop is extremely important. And we almost plant cover crops on an annual basis prior to sugar beets, just for wind erosion and to protect those small plants in the early spring. They will stand to frost better, they'll stand wind better, and it's almost essential to have a cover crop. But it's also essential to be able to spray that cover crop out. And we don't spray all the ditch banks. We don't spray everywhere indiscriminately that pollinators might be beneficial. So that is absolutely a false statement on those comments that we kill everything in the whole world. We don't. We spray very sparingly where it needs to be sprayed, and that's it.
Okay, and I think actually my last question, and thank you, everybody, for your patience here.
You just muted yourself, Claire.
Good, I was hoping it wasn't me.
My mouse goes wandering, and then I can't right screen. I just wanted you to address the staff recommendation regarding neonic seeds. So staff determined that non-neonic coated seeds are not, sugar beet seeds are not available. But could you address non-neonic coated corn seeds, please?
I think it's, I think it's a mistake to eliminate any neonic at this point. There's so much research, and I wish Rebecca could have talked about that a little more. I mean, we spend gobs of money every year, just in the sugar beet industry, trying to come up with better solutions for growing crops. The corn industry is doing the same thing. But there's no good alternative right now to replace that. And again, the very minute amount that's used on a seed coating is essential to a good crop. I mean, Peter Newton talks about what the risks are and what is, you know, look at the science, what really comes from using neonic and how it affects pollinators. The evidence is to keep using them on the seed coating until we come up with something better.
Okay.
And that's, you know, let the research work itself to find that product. And then I think if open space staff worked with its growers and had the flexibility to work on these things with the growers, that we'd all be much better off. And let's concentrate on some of those things. I think the staff is great. We've got a great working relationship with them. I think we ought to keep it up. There's avenues to make this, the, one of the best counties in the world to have other people look at as leaders in this area and environmentalism. And banning neonic is just not the perfect answer. In my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question as well. Thanks, Mr. Schlegel, for being here this afternoon and for being patient, and everyone. I had a similar question in regards to glyphosate that you've already responded to, but I wonder if you would, as a tenant farmer in Boulder County, if you would address some of the comments that came forth in the packet about, you know, just paying off the sugar beet leases. And I think my concern and question around that is, one, we've heard that that isn't possible. There's legal contracts, there's, you know, I trust, there's these other pieces around that. But can you just speak to what happens to the land that we're talking about, yours included? If Boulder County decides to remove these tools in the toolbox that you're talking about? What does that mean for your family? What does that mean for other tenant farmers, or what could it mean?
If you would, if you would allow?
If we eliminated the different tools in the toolbox and?
It would be devastating on our part. I mean, this is, this is, this is a long conversation. The amount of capital that it takes to farm these days is just immense. We need, in this area, we are landlocked. We can't grow very much. And to be able to build on the technology that we've already started, we need the acres that we farm. If we would be, and again, I go back to why are sugar beets growing in this area? It's because they grow very well. We have the highest quality, highest purity sugar beets almost in the world. So we need every acre that we can get in our operation. I mean, we farm about fifteen hundred acres, which about three hundred of that is Boulder County open space. We need every acre that to be able to have the capital, at the end of the day, to be able to afford the technology that makes sustainability an option. I mean, if we're strapped with
Well, we lost connectivity, it looks like.
Don't want to and shouldn't. I mean, we would, we would have, we may, I mean, our, I don't know what we would do if we lost our sugar beets and being able to grow corn on Boulder County open space. We'd have to sit back and do some serious evaluations. And again, I got one more. I mean, if it wasn't for my dad, in a hundred and fourteen years, I wouldn't be here. My son wants to do what he's doing, wants to farm. There's no way in the world that he could start doing this without the history that got me started, that I can pass on to him. So we need to keep these family farms in business the best we can.
Thank you for responding to that. And the other question I had, you talked, one of Commissioner Levy's questions resulted in comments around the splitting up large parcels is not workable, is what I heard you say. And I'm just, could you speak to that just a little bit more? What does that mean to you as a farmer? Not workable?
We farm three hundred acres and there's three fields. To split those fields up, and again, we've got one of the fields that we personally, my son and I paid for the sprinkler on that field, a hundred and forty acres. You can't divide it up, because one sprinkler irrigates the whole field. And again, there's multiple fields, and we have to make sure that fifty percent of that, those acres are planted into small grain, so we are done irrigating that small grain by July fourth and allow all of our storage water to maintain the row crops on the other fifty percent of those farms. So there's not enough water to make garden farms out of all these acres, not even, not even close, not even. You know, there's half enough water, maybe.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the time and your attention.
Thanks, Paul. So what I'm going to do, board members and POZAC members, is I'm just going to start calling names. If you want to ask a question of the person that just got done speaking, just interrupt me, please. So we're on to Vanessa McCracken. For three minutes, please state your name and address.
It looks like, excuse me, Rod Bruski might be next.
I'm using the list that's
Hello there.
Okay, the order got changed. So Bree, I'm using the list that's online on the internet, and this got changed around. So I'll follow this now, but can you please keep that one accurate? That would be helpful to me.
Yes, I can do that. Sure, Jones. Bring in a barber assistant clerk to the board.
Okay, Rod Bruski for nine minutes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just speaking on behalf of somebody who has been surrounded by Boulder County parks and open space. Oh, Rod Bruski, eighty-three, eighty-one, East County Line Road.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Let's get started again here. But anyway, living for the last ten years surrounded by Boulder County parks and open space. You know, I have boots on the ground here, and I have witnessed the devastation of EIA extracted industrial agriculture on our open space plants. We have been repeatedly chemically trespass. We have been flooded. We have been dusted out because of these poor soil management things by repeated tillage of all this soil, no cover crops. And it's decimating to our soils. And I think the whole cropland policy needs to be totally revamped. And I just want to bring out a couple of points, that it kind of seems like what has been happening over the last decade is, and I know, Matt, you're probably pretty familiar with this, dealing with oil and gas extraction down State House. The old analogy, the foxes guarding the hen house. The incentive, the original incentive of the bond issue for parks and open space, when the voters voted in, was to purchase land and conserve it. This EIA-type farming, what it does is it abuses, exploits, and pollutes the land. And I don't think the taxpayers had that in that bond issue, and I think that's a real big mistake. Now, you're talking about GM crops, Roundup-ready stuff. Bayer is saying they're planning to pull Roundup off the American market next year. I think, you know, not looking at an alternative, it's going to be a fool's errand. You know, every time they boom-spray or an aircraft comes flying over here, and I know they're talking about Roundup, but we're also talking about fungicides, like the recent chemical trespass event that happened to us. Fungicides kill all the beneficial bacteria in the soil. And I, you know, living this and seeing it boots on the ground, I would recommend that the, you know, the Citizen Advisory Board of Boulder County Parks and Open Space, they're welcome to come out here. And you don't need to be a scientist like all these other guys to look at the devastation out here. And I think it's a real, you know, travesty that the And I think it's a real, you know, travesty that the taxpayers, the stakeholders of Boulder County are paying to actually have the soil destroyed. I think it's kind of negligent on the county's part. You know, the other thing is, is, you know, and I'm not trying to get off on the weeds here, but I want to bring out a very valid point that Boulder County has jumped on a class action suit to sue the oil and gas industry over climate change. Well, one of the strategies that these attorneys are doing are, not only are they naming the corporation for their inaction on climate change, but now they're also going after the CEOs and stuff, naming them because they had knowledge that they knew they had bad information. So I think that really opens up a a world of litigation possibilities for Boulder County that, considering there's a thousand fence line acres that border private property of Boulder County, takes two people to start a class action suit, and that could be a real big problem if you continue the uses of any kind of insecticide. And I know that just sounds really like, oh, man, there's nothing we can do. Well, here's a blueprint. And I hope you have your pencils out because this would probably be a pretty good blueprint to start with. First of all, do a two-year moratorium on buying any more land of Bol- for Boulder County for open space and divert that money to the nine farmers to actually become soil restorations. You know, forget the profits of, you know, this extractive industrial agriculture and actually put them on the payroll. But I think they would really like to be heroes here for us. This is a climate crisis we're looking at. And part of that, how you use that, all that money and like on the research of soil health and stuff, we know the soil's dead. We don't need research to prove that. It's obvious. Especially if you came out here, I could show you in five minutes what I'm talking about. I use that money, contract with like Gabe Brown or David Oian. These are, these are large-scale farmers that have successfully and viably transitioned their farm operations and got away from this. And they're they're doing a really good job. And I think like the eight hundred thousand dollars that we spent with Mad Egg, you give Gabe Brown eight hundred thousand dollars, he would work with these farmers. He speaks their language. He knows all the problems, all the challenges that are, you know, incurred in in this transition. And, you know, as far as it goes, tick tock clocks running here. We don't have much time as far as the climate goes. So anything but bold decisive action will not get us anywhere. We've seen the last ten years of these incremental changes and we have netted zero, basically. We need a a bold action plan that's decisive. And of course, it's not going to be easy, but I think the end reward would be really great. And I think any of your bold decisions would be gladly backed up by the stakeholders of Boulder County who pay the taxes to purchase these lands. And, you know, I I think you guys would really have their backs. So I think you guys need to revamp all this and really step back and look at the other outside, you know, the outside world of what this really means. I don't think that we as stakeholders should be engaging in the subsidy of destroying our lands for the profits of the sugar beet industry. I think that is a real poor mistake to be made. And again, I'm just saying, come on out, look. All these scientists that spoke before, you know, they're talking about, let me see my notes here, about quantable, quantable, the one lady was talking about quantifiable results. Well, I'll tell you, come on out and I'll show you some quantifiable results of dead soil. And, you know, the other thing is, if you look at research, weeds are the first responders to distressed soil. That, you know, killing weeds, you got to maintain them and not let them go to seed and stuff, and that just takes maintenance. But they're the first responders. That's like you telling the fire department not to show up at a fire. And, you know, the outcomes, I know it's going to be a tough transition, but we have to do it for climate change. There's no choice. We got to take out the idea of we're going to make this into some kind of business proposition. And we actually got to protect the climate for our children and future generations. And this extractive industrial agriculture model is failed. It's a failed policy. The science is out there. I would say, look at the, you know, when they talk about peer-reviewed science, I'd say, look at comment number sixty-three from the epidemiologist in his peer-reviewed science about the effects of neonicinoids, Roundup and things like that. I noticed they never have mentioned Don Huber, a agricultural emigrant. And he's the one that raised the flag about the use of Roundup in soils. His research has shown that Roundup in our type of soil, which is a clay, high alkaloid soil, it remains in the soil for about eight years. So every year that we fail to act immediately is kicking the can, the proverbial kick, kick the can down the road. I know I've used that before, down the road for two years before there's going to be any kind of substantial uh, change in the soil health. You got to get the biology in there. You got to get the nematodes and all that biology that comes in there. I've given you guys lots of information that is, you know, fact-based. You guys, if I'm wrong.
That's your time, Rod.
All right, yeah. So if I'm wrong, you know, I'll eat all the humble pie in the world if you can prove me wrong. But I'd like you guys to see what I have for proof. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa McCracken for three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Post Sac. My name is Vanessa McCracken. I'm the District Manager of the Boulder Valley and Longmont Conservation Districts. Our address is ninety-five ninety-five Nelson Road in Longmont. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on such an important policy for Boulder County. The Boulder Valley and Longmont Conservation Districts appreciate the leadership of the current Boulder County Commissioners and the open space staff in reviewing the cropland policy. This is a very complex issue with far-reaching ramifications. The policy has been crafted and modified over the course of more than a decade. There's no simple, one-size-fits-all solution for farmers. Producers need the ability to make choices for their operations based on the location, soil type, irrigation water, crop rotations, the scale, markets, equipment, funding, management, labor availability, weather patterns, quality of life and personal philosophy. The Conservation Districts celebrate the diversity of Boulder County farms and Boulder County farmers. Boulder County should not support policies which restrict specific scientific advancements. The Conservation Districts support policies which champion partnerships with local farmers working to improve natural resource concerns with holistic management systems and improved soil health built from ground-up collaboration. Boulder County open space is truly a spectacular treasure. I had the privilege of working in the Agricultural Resources Division for nearly five years. I had the privilege of stepping foot on nearly every one of the twenty-five thousand acres. I had the privilege of understanding the diverse operations of nearly sixty lessees on county open space. I had the privilege of encouraging and fostering sustainable and regenerative agriculture. Boulder County has created something very special. It will take both the open space natural resources and the dedicated stewards of the dedicated stewards for the program to benefit all future generations. Boulder County should hold their agricultural lessees to a high standard, high standard. After all, they are stewards of public land. We encourage these high standards to be met with incentives rather than with policies which ban inputs. Boulder County Parks and Open Spaces' vision is to be a national leader in sustainable agriculture. Let's harness the spirit of our community and the experience and willingness of our farmers. Together, we can reach that vision. Wendell Berry said, "You can save the land. You can't save the land without saving the people. To save either, you have to save both." This policy is not just about the land. This is truly about the people, too. It's about our preserved, cherished, prized open space. It's about weaving together the human and the natural world into the fabric of our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you. So for three minutes, Lynn Siegel, please state your name and address. The timer's in the lower right corner, so you can see where you are of the list. I'll see, Lynn, you have to unmute there in that lower left corner where the microphone is.
Got it.
All right, we hear you now.
Um, where's the timer?
It's on the list. We see the list with all the people to testify. It's in the lower right corner there. You see the little green circle? It says three.
Hmm, okay. Um, well, this is pretty intuitive and it sounds like the folks that are promoting their own welfare and their own profit have got their own facts.
Can we get a name and address for the record?
Oh, Lynn Siegel, five thirty-eight Dewey, Boulder. Your facts are my facts. Climate change or not climate change? I mean, I didn't know that this this discussion was going to be so rudimentary. But sugar-coated, you know, neonics on sugar beet. Sugar beet is a product that I don't consider very valuable to our society in the first place. Ask the healthcare industry. And and as far as having some sugar beet, great. But sugarcane, I won't eat sugar beet because I know that it's promoting its use for me to be purchasing it. So I just get sugarcane sugar, very little of it. And, you know, our whole industry is primed up on, and and certain populations, Latino population, you know, really bad health from really bad nutrition from these kind of practices that subsidize and support the things that we don't need in our diet. Now, what I can see that that we can do so that the farmers are still operating is to have a freeze plant and a canning plant and can and freeze all of our own Boulder foods. And have our own product so that we aren't ordering out to other states for transportation of bulk commodities. Um, excluding the ones that are not able to be produced in our region right here. But no till soil, crop rotation, no neonicinoids, no glyphosate. The water and the air are all fungible things that we live with every day. And everything moves within our ecosphere, so to speak, through the water, through the air. You know, we know this now because of the virus. There might be a lot here that you aren't seeing or or hearing the full story about from the people that the scientists that got together at the beginning of this discussion and got nine minutes. I don't think you're going to hear the real story from them because they have their.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you. Next is Ellen Burns. Please state your name and record, address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dr. Ellen Burns, fourteen oh four Longspreek Avenue, Longmont, Boulder County. I am specific when I cite my doctor as it is earned through my PhD in agricultural and resource economics, which I applied globally in public resource use and impact cases. Through this lens and as a resident of Boulder County, I strongly oppose the proposed modification of the cropland policy that reverses the phase-out of Roundup glyphosate, ready crops and neonic coated seeds from Boulder County open space. Depressed commodity crop prices and lack of demand for commodity crop shares is not our job to subsidize. That is the farm bill. The proposed modification puts not only the remaining county cropland at risk, but also the health of countywide ecosystems. Boulder County behavior suggests that we prefer a diverse local food supply. We support CSA's, farm stands, year-round farmers markets, farm-to-table restaurants and a two-to-one county-supported SNAP benefits for local produce. We benefit from local producers' engagement with our food banks and crisis response to pandemics and other food disruption. Other public landowners in Boulder County have discontinued Roundup application on their lands. The largest of these is CU, with the city of Boulder also on board with the ban. More telling is the new owner of the Roundup brand determining that the risk of environmental and health, human health liability is so great that they have announced they will discontinue the retail distribution by 2023. Furthermore, they have established a liability fund of four point five billion dollars in response to growing legal action resulting in findings of negligence. In 2017, approximately eighty percent of the speakers at hearings on this cropland policy were in favor of a cropland policy to transition from glyphosate on our public land. Our behavior since then suggests we still prefer public land to be used for local nutrient-dense food with positive effects for our human and environmental members of our community. Other public leaders, science and even the glyphosate owner are moving away from its use and forward with safe and productive alternatives. Commissioners, for the sake of transparency, what do you uniquely know that has changed in our county such that Boulder County should move backwards with our public land policy? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up is Mark Guttridge. Three minutes, please state your name and address.
Time. Thank you. I'm Mark Guttridge, eighty-six twenty-seven North Ninety-Fifth Street in Longmont. I steward a hundred and sixty acres of open space ag lands, a hundred percent pesticide and herbicide-free. I've submitted public comments and hope you read them. What I'd like to add is this, what we have here is not an agricultural debate, but one about the democratic process. Boulder County citizens have made it loud and clear over nine years of testimony that they do not approve of Roundup-ready crops, which guarantees the use of glyphosate to be used on publicly owned agricultural lands. We've already gone through the extensive public comment and already adopted a transition plan. Open Space staff was tasked through Appendix thirteen, Part Five of the transition policy with giving an update on that transition, and instead, they have taken the initiative to suggest getting rid of the whole transition. I don't think that is what is meant in that document when it says Commissioners could consider updates on the transition based on feedback. I'm curious if any of you three Commissioners tasked the staff with developing recommendations to end the transition. The staff memo tries to show the safety of our current chemical agriculture with a lengthy but pretty much irrelevant discussion of EIQ values. As we've discussed many times in past public comment sessions, glyphosate isn't designed to be toxic. Its mode of action is a chemical chelator that binds up the essential trace minerals and disrupts enzymic activity that is critical to the immune system of the plant as well as the immune system of the beneficial soil bacteria and fungi. Unless you are genetically modified to resist it by phosphate, your immune system collapses and whatever other germ or disease in the field takes you out. An analogy is you're walking down the road and get sprayed with the substance that absorbs in your skin. And within minutes, your immune system stops working, sickness sets in and you have no way to fight it, so you die. Your family is devastated and wants to sue the person who sprayed, but their scientists and lawyers say, wait a minute, it was the germs that killed you, not us. We are non-toxic. We've heard that argument for nine years and all, and as we have seen, it isn't holding up in the court of law. The sooner we get glyphosate off of our public lands, the less liability there will be for the county and the less likely the county will find itself in a potential negligence lawsuit. So here's my specific feedback on the recommendations. Recommendation number two around soil health. We've heard this talk of focusing on soil health and gathering data in open space reports, memos and policies for nine years. And we, as taxpayers, have been funding that the whole time. Based on the zero data sets ever provided to public, how are things going to be different this time? Open Space has been managing a carbon sequestration study by CSU for three, four years now without one data set ever provided publicly. Maybe it's time to shift these data collection efforts to a department that actually cares about it, possibly Sustainability Office or Boulder County Public Health. As for recommendation number three, this ask is outside the scope of the task provide an update on transition. Abandoning a plan is very different than adjusting it. In the process, how this recommendation was developed is not transparent. I urge you to decline and ask how open. I urge you to decline and ask how Open Space can provide an updated transition timeline and specifics of how things will be handled differently this time to get meaningful support to our transitioning farmers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Elizabeth Black. Three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Black and I run the Citizen Science Soil Health Project, which helps Boulder County farmers and ranchers improve the health of their soil. I've learned a whole lot from the last three years of our project. I've learned that both our organic and conventional growers care passionately about the health of their soil and work hard to improve it just in different ways. Organic growers add lots of organic matter to their soil, which is good for their soil's health. But they plow and cultivate a whole lot to control weeds, which is bad for their soil's health. They also struggle with high phosphorus in their soil from all the compost and manure they apply, which is bad for downstream water quality. Conventional growers also add organic matter to their soil, just usually not as much as the organic guys. That's good for their soil health. They minimize their plowing, which is good too. But they use more man-made chemicals, which many folks here believe to be bad for their soil's health. So each growing method has its good and bad points. Through our project, I have also learned that whether you use organic or conventional growing methods does not have much effect on a soil's health. Rather, it's things like soil pH, water availability, soil texture, tillage intensity, organic matter inputs, and days of living cover that really affect the health of our soils. In our new century, we expect businesses and sectors to be nimble, able to change as quickly as the world around us changes. We expect businesses to rapidly adapt to new technologies, to turn on a dime like a drone. But the final thing I have learned is that agriculture is not like a nimble drone. Rather, it's like a huge super taker, taking an exceedingly long time to turn. In agriculture, there is usually only one shot per year to try something new. And many reasons why that one shot might or might not work, which then requires more years of testing, tweaking, and retesting. So the timeline set by the previous commissioners for GMO transition and phase out was totally unrealistic. Based on what I've learned in the Citizen Science Soil Health Project, I support staff's amended recommended changes to the cropland policy. I'm especially pleased with staff's focus on soil health. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up is Andy Breeder. Three minutes, state your name and address to the record, please.
Hi, I'm Andy Breiter. My address is 6969 Belmont Road, Boulder, Colorado 80301. I'm a cattle rancher, first generation farmer. I'm currently serving as the president of the Flatirons Young Farmers Coalition. The following opinion is my own opinion and has not been discussed amongst our chapter members. Before I get into comments about the cropland policy suggestions put forward by staff, I do have to make a comment on this hearing and when this hearing is taking place. As Mr. Schlegel said before, he's in the middle of harvest. Other corn and sugar beet growers are also in the middle of harvest. And so are market vegetable gardeners and other people like myself who are harvesting their meat and the work that they've done all year round. I have to make that comment because it seems rather nonsensical to have a meeting about agriculture in the middle of harvest season, in the middle of a day, a weekday, when people are out in the fields. Two years ago, I spoke in front of county commissioners in favor of the old transition plan because I felt like there was hope within that plan. After reading staff's recommendations, I'm a little dismayed by what staff has put forward. To me, reading through those recommendations, it felt like we were putting our hands up saying, we're not able to answer this question. We're not able to solve these problems. And by these problems, as a young farmer, I believe those problems are rather large. We have older farmers transitioning to younger farmers. Who's going to take those people's place? We have massive effects of climate change that will affect our drought conditions, affect our weather conditions. And we're just saying we're going to stick to the technology that big companies are going to put forward and use those technologies to solve our problems. We're not actually solving those problems on our own. I rather liked a lot of what Boulder County staff put forward in terms of market issues being some of the main problems which will affect our ability to transition. But I don't see any recommendations within that to how to affect those market problems. Do we not have the resources at our disposal to affect those issues? Do we not have abilities to create mills, to build relationships with Whole Foods or other grocery stores, to find our citizens actually the food that they're asking for, that they voted for? I don't agree with splitting up all our land. I think there's other solutions available to us. And I really hope that commissioners, POSAC, and county staff can actually work to solve these solutions in creative manners without not just sticking our heads in the mud and doing what rather large companies say is best. I want to say thank you to all the farmers that are on this call and for all the work they've done in helping our land for the past generations that they've done that work for.
Thank you, Andy.
I have a quick question. If Andy has a few more minutes.
Andy, you're still there for a question?
Andy might not have heard me. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, commissioners. This is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. He got demoted to an attendee. We've switched him back to panelists in case you'd like.
Bree, thank you for that assistance. Hi, Andy, if you have just another couple of minutes, thank you for being here, being present, being patient with our list of community speakers and presenters. The third topic or the third question that you had there on how do we create a market? Just curious if you have any solutions, if you've got any, either from yourself or and/or if your the the group that you're working with may want to follow up with some of those solutions. Is there anything you have right now that you would?
To me, the type of proposal that was put forward and the type of crops that were grown as a part of the transition plan that failed to find a market. I'm not sure that there was necessarily a home for those first, and we really need to work to build partnerships with grocery stores to my mind, or even creating our own grocery stores, creating our own centers that people can easily consume their food. Many people that go to that go to Boulder County Farmers Market, for example, you don't see them bringing grocery carts around. How are they actually getting their food? And if that's the type of food that we're trying to transition to, food that is regenerative and resilient, we're going to have to also adjust how people are shopping or actually work into the models that they are shopping. So it's rather difficult right now for smaller to medium-sized farmers to get into large grocery stores. So how can we work to build relationships with those grocery stores or those distribution channels so that folks can get into those markets? I know Boulder Valley School District has a really good farm-to-school project, and they're continuing to work through Boulder County Sustainability Grant to get more funding for local producers. We just need to continue to build relationships like that. And I will say that the young farmers have worked and talked with Mike Foster and City of Boulder OSMP. And we talked with Vanessa McCracken's group about having further discussions with the variety of organizations at the table so that we can build that resilient ecosystem, which includes our markets. It includes our economic ecosystem. It includes our environmental ecosystem and it includes the community base that is involved in our local ecosystem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next up is Andrew Stalen. I hope I pronounced that correctly. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are you there, Andrew? Lower left is where the mute button is. You can unmute yourself.
Sorry.
I hear you. I think I heard you. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Andrew Stalen. I live at 2855 Dover Drive in Boulder. I'm a professor emeritus of the Department of Molecular, Cellular, and Developmental Biology at CU Boulder. I retired 15 years ago, but I've remained scientifically active. The biggest challenge for farmers in the next quarter century is to produce enough food to feed 10 billion people by 2050. To achieve this goal, they have to produce twice as much food on half the land. Think loss of land due to urbanization, salination, flooding, and desertification, while coping with less water and higher temperatures. Not to not to be forgotten is the need for sustainability. These goals can only be achieved by allowing farmers to plant the best available seeds for their farmland and also use the most suitable features of traditional organic and regenerative farming methods. Prohibiting the use of any of these inputs and methods makes reaching these goals impossible. I've been following the science and participating in the discussion of genetically modified plants known as GMOs since 1984. 1984 was the year that the first report of transfer of a foreign gene into a plant was published. Recent DNA sequencing studies have shown that virtually all plants have incorporated foreign genes into their genomes. That is, they are natural GMOs. The first GMO tomato was cleared for sale in 1994. The plant biology science community was expecting the public to appreciate the improved shelf life of these tomatoes. But the opposite happened because the new plant breeding technique had not been introduced to the public ahead of time. A general mistrust of all GMOs developed. The organic food industry seized upon this mistrust to promote its non-GMO products. The creation of the Frankenstein food label added more fuel to the mistrust of GMOs. This environment led to the ban of GM crops on open space lands, a policy based on politics and not on science. In conclusion, it is time to free our farmers from the shackles that impair their ability to grow crops that are best suited for their land in Boulder County.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. You have great timing. Casey Lyons. State your name and address for the record. I see tentative. We'll see if Casey's here. Are you here, Casey?
Commissioner Jones, this is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. I am not seeing Casey in our participants list. So we will highlight that name and we can move on to Richard, please.
Sounds good. Rich Andrews, state your name and address for the record for three minutes. Mute buttons, lower left side. Turn the camera. You there, Rich? Lower left corner for the mute button.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, I hope.
Yes, you are. We hear you, Rich.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I had trouble finding the right button. My name is Richard Andrews. I'm a Boulder County resident, live at 6803 J Road in the county. I'm a chemical and environmental scientist for more than 50 years. Specialized in agriculture, plant health, and soil sciences for the last 30 years. I'm the owner of Andrews Family Organic Farm here in Boulder. And I was appointed to the Cropland Policy Advisory Group back in 2010. My key points I'd like to raise is probably a lot more than I can say in three minutes. But I would ask that you all read everything I've sent. Unfortunately, it's probably more than 50 pages long. But please read it because it's filled with scientifically-backed, fully cited information. I don't make things up. The key point on neonicotinoids first is thank you very much for proposing the, in fact, ban. I'm not supportive of the revised ban that's been announced as of this hearing. It took more than 10 years to get where we are now. Let's keep with it. I will ask again that you carefully read my suggestions on how that ban is actually worded. The devil is in the details on the wording. Regarding the the other point, the second one, having to do with the GE crops that are currently allowed, again, I am not in favor of allowing them. You are you're essentially violating the public trust that was developed over decades, in fact, with lots of testimony and not this rushed testimony on this particular hearing. The major issue is not GMO crops per se, but in fact, that every one of those crops is in fact designed to be used with a toxic pesticide. That is the issue. Glyphosate is critical. I've provided you a literature review of the glyphosate issues, the health, the environmental issues, with more than 115 scientifically peer-reviewed references. So I hope you will read it and believe it. Glyphosate is a class IIa carcinogen as designated by the International Agency on the Research and Cancer, a World Health Organization subsidiary entity. It is toxic to many diseases and not just the cancer that is noted by the World Health Organization. It is also toxic to soil health despite what some people have claimed. Soil health is key to other goals of the county, including things like combating climate change. I guess I ran out of time.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Mary Mulry, three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Mulry. I live at 12855 North 66th Street in rural Boulder County. I have a PhD in food science and human nutrition. Hang on, just lost it. And I manage a small acreage organic farm with goats and chickens. I've been working on these issues since 2010. I'm on the Advisory Committee for Extension and I'm a past member of the now-defunct Food and Ag Policy Council. I was instrumental in writing the citizens' cropland policy in 2017. I'm frankly disgusted by this process. The citizens were once again not given enough notice, information, or input to comment on these recommendations. The farmers and large GMO interests always have an advantage. Note, they all spoke first with nine minutes. It's not a coincidence. We have at least $100 million asset that's been mismanaged. If it were managed as an integrated farm, it would be in the top 1% of farm sizes in the country. There's been very little transparency, accountability, and concern about what the public wants. We voted in new commissioners. They failed us. We want organic, regenerative, healthy food, little to no pesticides, common sense. No neonics on seeds, no glyphosate, no other toxic pesticides, healthy food. The county staff have been incompetent. The consultants have not adhered to their contract. The goal was 20% organic by 2020. We're at 6%, epic fail. There was no public hearing in 2019. If you read county slides, moderate equals minimal. Grow beets in Laramore, Weld County instead of amending our policy. Organic corn can be grown with better economics as I presented before. The cropping system report was poorly done, not peer-reviewed and biased. It should have been recalled. Glyphosate derivatives do not stick around in the soil or do stick around in the soil. Pollinators are not healthy here. Talk to beekeepers. Please don't listen to these lies. The county's never adhered to the cropland policy since it's been written. No reports in 2018 and 2019, even though required. No health, soil health reporting, stonewalling on public requests. Have they even read the policy? This is yet another sham public process where farmers are given the advantage. You've given us no choice as citizens, but to work to You've given us no choice as citizens, but to work to repeal or work against open space and sustainability taxes. Until we have the confidence the money will be used to protect our valuable asset. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is Deb Gardner for three minutes. Welcome, Deb. Good to see you.
Thank you. I am former Boulder County Commissioner Deb Gardner, and I live at fourteen oh four Long Speake Avenue, Longmont. I agree with moving forward with the neonicotinoid phase-out by the end of the year. There are viable alternatives at no extra cost, so I would urge that they not be allowed beginning with the twenty-twenty-two planting season, including sugar beets. I also support expanding work with all the tenants to focus on improving soil health, including carbon sequestration, which is becoming increasingly important as the world reaches code red with climate crisis. I do not, however, agree with the proposed policy reversal up to allow the growing of roundup-ready crops on public land in Boulder County. Nowhere in the recommendation does it say that the reason for allowing GE corn and sugar beets is so that the farmers can use glyphosate, a known carcinogen to kill weeds in the field. I am not opposed to GE crops per se. I am opposed to the use of dangerous chemicals being used on public land. The previous change in policy included a transition plan for the farmers in an effort to not have the entire financial burden of the change fall on them. Sadly, I think it is safe to say that the transition plan has not been successful, and I feel that is on me. I knew the farmers were not really supportive of it and were only waiting for you all to get into office so that it could be reversed. I also had concerns that the ag staff were not really on board with the plan, but felt confident progress would be made because that was the direction they and their superiors had been given. When I was no longer a commissioner, I heard from members of the community how badly our policy direction had been undermined. If you believe there have not been enough affordable time for affordable alternatives to GE corn and sugar beets identified, a logical option would be to extend the deadline to allow for additional research, field trails, and market shifts to take place, rather than reversing the policy prematurely and with little scrutiny and public engagement. I do believe it is negligent to continue the use of glyphosate and neonyx on public land. I and all of you were endorsed by the Sierra Club when we ran for office. I believe we have a responsibility to uphold the trust they and the people of Boulder County put in us. Nothing much has changed since two thousand and eleven, except that even more evidence has been published regarding the dangers of glyphosate. Now is not the time to be reversing the crop land policy to allow their use. Reading the recommendation and listening to the staff presentation, you're not getting the whole picture. I would encourage you to take the time to read and listen to all of the previous hearings. But if you do not have the time, then please talk to Mark Gutridge and others who have a different perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deb. Next is Al Summers. It says tentative. Are you there, Al? Bree, is Al there?
Hi, Commissioner Jones. Yes, Al is present. We just promoted them to panelists.
Al, you're up. Three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Mute button's lower left corner, little microphone. That's where the video is as well. So lower left corner, look for that microphone. Unmute. Get rid of the red slash by clicking on it.
He was unmuted and then I think he hit it again. Oh, there we go.
Al, are you there? He's typing in his name and address. Al, that means you're not being able to speak. The mute button's the lower left corner. Oh, sorry. Is Al Summers on, Bree?
Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. It does look like Al Summers is in our panelist list. And maybe having some technical difficulties, so I think we could, oh, I see Al here coming on. Al, are you able to speak?
Yeah, I see him in there. It's lower left corner for that microphone, Al. Technical difficulties. Why don't we see if we can reconcile? Is that works for you, Bree? And go to Mel Green. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, Mel Green for three minutes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Jones. Before we go forward, is there a way for a person to just call in to the hearing if Mr. Summers isn't able to join this way?
Yes, there is, is my understanding, Bree.
Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Yes, Commissioner Levy, we are able to take comments through the phone, so I will go ahead and just state that call-in number here on the record. It is give me just one second to toggle over. The phone number to call into this meeting is eight-three-three-dash-five-six-eight-dash-eight-eight-six-four. The webinar ID is one-six-zero-one-four-seven-nine-seven-eight-zero. And I'll go ahead and put this information in the chat as well.
While that's happening, let's call on Mel Green.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mel Green from four-twelve Nebraska Avenue in Berthold, Colorado. I have been an agricultural lender in Boulder County since nineteen eighty-five. I currently support the ag industry in providing working capital, not only for their day-to-day operations and growing their crops, but to purchase equipment and to purchase real estate in which farm ground is provided, which farm ground is used, produced our farm products that we have today. It takes a lot of working capital to make a farm work. The equipment is very expensive. The wear and tear on equipment is something that needs to be maintained. They have lots of risk in the facts that they have water issues, hail, wind, weather, freezing conditions which to work around and through. Oftentimes, they'll produce a crop that gets frozen out early and not being able to yield. So from our aspect, from the banking community, we want to make sure that these farmers have the best tools in their workbench that they can possibly have to produce the crops. As you've heard today, the increase in yield substantially changes with the GMO products. I believe the comment was made from ten to twenty-six percent increase by the use of GMOs over a period of time. And we need to have seed treatment so that we use less chemical. So from a standpoint of dollars spent for treatment for this, but also to give them a better yield so that they can compete and repay their loans. It takes a lot of working capital. The margins are thin to start with. Agricultural industry has been a long time part of Boulder County. We'd like to see that continued. And we would like to promote the continued use of the roundup-ready products as well as the seed treatment that we're using today, just to support continuation of agriculture and to let the young people in the ag industry have a place to move forward with in Boulder County.
Thank you, Mel. Looks like Al is on the screen now. Are you able to speak out? Lower the mic in the lower left corner. I saw one phone number on the line. I don't know if it's Al. Lower left corner, Al. Little microphone icon. Click on it. The little crosshatch red mark goes on me. Can't hear you, Al. Sorry. See your lips moving. Oh, you got the phone. Looks like calling in. We'll do Al here and then we'll take our break. It was noticed for a half hour. So when we get done with that, we'll come back in a half hour from that point. Sorry for the inconvenience for those of you who have to wait. Apologize. A lot of interest in this topic, obviously. And we want to hear from everybody, so we'll stay here until everybody's done. So I see on the attendees one phone number. I'm waiting to see if another one appears. Now still putting the stuff in the phone. If it doesn't happen soon, I think we take the break and then try to arrange for Al to be on when we come back. I see a second phone number appeared. So Al, star nine, has had be recognized. And the star six to unmute. Oh, there went the phone number. So Bree, I think what we do is we see if we can't figure out how to get Al connected and come back and it six-thirty-four.
Commissioner Jones, before we do that, I wonder if Mike would be willing just to to give a quick recap of the opportunities and kind of the next pieces for public to be involved when the next hearings are, et cetera. Just because I know we didn't have, we've had different people in and out so far as participants.
Yeah, Mike, so if you could tell everybody the process and I get after this opportunity to testify, it's send us an email. We're reading them all, by the way. All three commissioners read what we've gotten so far. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Happy to answer those questions, Commissioners. So today is the public hearing where public testimony is being contributed to the public discourse and conversation. And then on October twenty-eighth, the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee will be considering all of the testimony that has been heard today, as well as all of the written comments that have been submitted to date, as well as staff recommendations. They will deliberate over that information and come up with their own recommendation that will then be forwarded on to the Board of County Commissioners. On November fourth, the Board of County Commissioners will consider staff recommendation, the postact recommendation, as well as all the public testimony and public comments that have been submitted to date as they deliberate and then provide direction to staff on what they would like to see in terms of updates, if any, to the crop land policy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hello.
Hello. Well, doggone it, Al, there you are. Keep talking. Hey, it's all right. We can hear you. You have three minutes. State your name and address and go.
Hey, my name's Al Summers and I live at eighty-two eighty-nine North Ninety-Fifth Street in Longmont. And I'm just representing the Colorado Professional Beekeeping Association. And I just wanted to say that eighty percent of all the beehives in Colorado are represented by the Colorado Professional Beekeeping Association. And eighty percent of all the beehives in Colorado are also operated by the virtual beekeepers or the livelihood-based beekeepers. They're very similar to the heritage and the regular farmers in the county. The difference between livelihood-directed beekeeping and recreational beekeeping is that we depend, livelihoods depend on it for a living to get a product out of it, to be sustainable. Whereas recreational is usually optional. And I wanted to point out the fact that Boulder County in particular has a predominant number of recreational beekeepers and we feel that there's nothing wrong with that, but that there's a difference in priority. Like a, like a regular commercial farmer, you have to produce something. You have to be profitable in order to stay in business, whereas if you're recreational, you usually are optional. And what that means is that it carries a sort of a idea that if you're a recreational beekeeper, you're not so concerned about the bottom line, so your your options and you're freer to like indulge yourself in a lot of the political and ideological stuff. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's just that's the difference between sustainable beekeeping and production beekeeping and recreational beekeeping. I wanted to point out, a lot of people don't realize this, beekeeping, sustainable beekeeping was not possible in Colorado before. Colorado became a state. And it was only in the eighteen eighties and a little bit after that it was possible to keep bees year-round in Colorado. The reason for that is that habitat here, and this is another thing that a lot of people don't understand, the habitat in Colorado is indigenously sedges and grasses, which is essentially non-flowering plants. So the honeybees were not able to sustain here until the farmers came in and started planting things like alfalfa. Is that my time? Hello? Is that it?
Matt, you're on mute. Sorry, Commissioner.
Do I have, do I have some more time?
You can wrap up if you'd like, Al.
I just wanted to say that there's always been a interdependence between the the regular farmers here, the conventional farmers, and the conventional beekeepers. And that's why the Colorado Professional Beekeepers support conventional farming. And we have nothing against the organic thing. I think, we think it's fine. We can control it just. But since we all pay taxes and we all support this, we feel that we would like the sustainable beekeepers. In Colorado, the commercial beekeepers would like a say-so and considerations, just the same as the organic and the alternatives do.
Okay, thank you, Al. Appreciate it. Glad we got you on. So it is six-eleven. We will recess until six-forty. And then we'll start back up. Again, thanks for everybody's patience. We want to get through everybody. We want to hear everybody. So we'll start back up at six-forty.
So. We'll bring the meeting back to order. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Welcome back, everybody. I don't know. Am I at the top of the list there, Bree? At Jason Evanson? Go ahead, Jason, when you're ready. In three minutes, state your name and address.
Hello, everybody. As stated before, my name is Jason Evanson. I'm the Beta Seed Grand Sales Leader, the leading supplier of sugar beet seed for Boulder County. I grew up on a sugar beet farm in Minnesota. I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in agriculture business. I've been involved in agriculture my entire life, specifically in the sugar beet industry for over 15 years. I work at our corporate office, which is 5705 West Old Shakopee Road, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55437. First off, I'm going to start off speaking to those these issues on the table from a practical standpoint as a seed supplier. Beta seed, sugar beet seed, is not and has no plans to be available in the future without neonic seed treatments, at least for the foreseeable future until something comes along that is safer or is demanded by our customers. All seed treatments are applied pre-market entry and small batch treatments are not possible. It's important to note as well, this product is not used exclusively in Boulder County, and it is offered and allowed in all other counties of North America where sugar beets are grown. As far as genetically engineered seed, Beta Seed also plans to continue with genetically engineered seed offer exclusively in all North American markets. This technology, as previously stated by others, has revolutionized sugar beet production, allowed producers to improve their land use, cut water use by 33%, reduce fuel consumption by 50%, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50%. Once again, just like neonics, genetically engineered seed is also not exclusive to Boulder County. It is offered and allowed in all counties and states of the 11 North American sugar beet markets where our seed is grown. In my opinion, if the commissioners do not review and reverse all bans that allow farmers to use the most advanced seed and pesticide technologies available in the future and now, it appears highly likely that sugar beet crops will simply not be grown in Boulder County. I yield any remaining time I have back to the panel. Thank you very much.
I have one quick question, if I may.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Evanson, for being here this evening. Just a quick question. What I heard you say that one of the options in regards to alternative seeds would be if it was demanded by buyers or demanded by producers. How many, how many buyers and our producers are you talking about that you service with your company?
So we, we service all customers in North America, United States, and Canada. A specific number I do not have, but it's in the thousands.
In that thousand, so what percentage of those buyers would have to demand a change in seed that isn't neonic seed for you to be able to really consider?
Well, I think the first thing that would have to happen is there needs to be a tech technology that comes along that is safer for the environment and also demanded by the customers and also does it reduce a fuel or doesn't provide, provide things that are more detrimental, to be honest to you, than the environment than there is now. There are some alternative options that were talked about. Those are very old technologies. The, as far as neonics, it's a very small amount that is put on the seed. When you start talking about chemicals applied overall, known carcinogens and so forth, that is a concern of ours as well. We feel that we're providing the most, the most economical, the most favorable for the grower and the safest products out there right now for the growers in Boulder County.
Is there any technology that you all are supporting right now that would be moving towards an alternative? We know a tech, technology is moving faster than we can all even consider.
Oh, exactly.
You have your, you have your ear to the ground in this particular industry.
Exactly, and we are always looking for, we are not tied to one thing or another. As a research-based company, we're always following science, whether it be genetically engineered, organic, it doesn't really make a difference. We're looking at everything that is the best for the grower and the environment. And as a research-based company, like I said, we follow the science and we certainly hope that the commissioners in Boulder County will as well.
Are you currently working on anything that would be an, an alternative from a technological standpoint right now that your company is supporting?
I'm not at the present time, as far as I'm aware, but I can check with our staff and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Jones, you're muted.
I'm not doing well that way tonight. So next up is John Dillman. Thanks, everybody, for your patience waiting to come back. You have three minutes. State your name and address. Unmute button's in the lower left corner. It's a little microphone.
Okay, are you able to see, hear me now?
We can hear you.
But, but you're, I don't know if I didn't do something correctly to be able for you to see me. Sorry.
The lower left-hand corner, a little camera. You just click the camera and this little cross thing comes off and you're on screen.
I don't see a camera. I see Jeremy Smith.
Okay, maybe your screen's different than mine. But go ahead.
Oh, how's that?
There you are. There you are.
Okay, very good. Hello, I'm John Dillman at 100511 Airport Road, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I'm a regional sales manager for Beta Seed, and I've been employed for 24 years. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my concern with the ban on genetically engineered seeds and neonicinoids, and these bans should be reversed. Genetic engineered seed has promoted better soil microbial health, retaining organic matter and all-around soil improvement by transitioning to conservation tillage. Losing genetic engineered seed forces farmers to grow weed to control weeds mechanically with conventional tillage and increasing the use of herbicides. We provide only genetic engineered sugar beet seed to growers in every growing region in North America. If genetic engineered sugar beet seed is banned from Boulder County, there will not be any sugar beets grown. We apply neonicinoids to sugar beet seed at as it is the most efficient control for beet curly top virus, which is transmitted by the beet leaf hoppers. Beet curly top virus can be transmitted to another, a number of other crops and would become devastating to tomato, eggplant, pepper, and hemp growers. We do not provide sugar beet seed without treatment of neonics, which if the ban is not reversed, would make sugar beets extinct in Boulder County. There are no other counties in, in the sugar beet growing areas in North America that ban this product. Our seed processing equipment will not adapt to treating small quantities of seed without the neonics to allow the Boulder County growers to select the seed size to accommodate their planter and select the variety with the necessary disease package and high productivity to maximize profitability on the farm. Neonics are applied to each seed using the state-of-the-art pharmaceutical equipment at the rate of 24 grams per acre. Counter is the only other product label to control beet leaf hoppers and is applied at the rate of 9.8 pounds graker. Applying the neonic to each individual seed is similar to us taking a precise oral dose of a medication versus applying the medication to a large portion of our body. We treat sugar beet seed with a dust retardant and growers employ management practices to eliminate non-target exposure. And sugar beets do not flower, therefore it is not a concern for pollinators. Again, I support the commissioners reversing all of the bans and follow the, and allow the farmers to use the most advanced seed and pesticide technologies available in the future and now. It appears highly likely that sugar beet crops will simply not be grown in Boulder County. I yield any remaining time I have back to the panel. Thank you very much.
I have one quick question, if I may.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Evanson, for being here this evening. Just a quick question. What I heard you say that one of the options in regards to alternative seeds would be if it was demanded by buyers or demanded by producers. How many, how many buyers and our producers are you talking about that you service with your company?
So we, we service all customers in North America, United States, and Canada. A specific number I do not have, but it's in the thousands.
In that thousand, so what percentage of those buyers would have to demand a change in seed that isn't neonic seed for you to be able to really consider?
Well, I think the first thing that would have to happen is there needs to be a tech technology that comes along that is safer for the environment and also demanded by the customers and also does it reduce a fuel or doesn't provide, provide things that are more detrimental, to be honest to you, than the environment than there is now. There are some alternative options that were talked about. Those are very old technologies. The, as far as neonics, it's a very small amount that is put on the seed. When you start talking about chemicals applied overall, known carcinogens and so forth, that is a concern of ours as well. We feel that we're providing the most, the most economical, the most favorable for the grower and the safest products out there right now for the growers in Boulder County.
Is there any technology that you all are supporting right now that would be moving towards an alternative? We know a tech, technology is moving faster than we can all even consider.
Oh, exactly.
You have your, you have your ear to the ground in this particular industry.
Exactly, and we are always looking for, we are not tied to one thing or another. As a research-based company, we're always following science, whether it be genetically engineered, organic, it doesn't really make a difference. We're looking at everything that is the, the best for the grower and the environment. And as a research-based company, like I said, we follow the science and we certainly hope that the commissioners in Boulder County will as well.
Are you currently working on anything that would be an, an alternative from a technological standpoint right now that your company is supporting?
I'm not at the present time, as far as I'm aware, but I can check with our staff and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Jones, you're muted.
I'm not doing well that way tonight. So next up is John Dillman. Thanks, everybody, for your patience waiting to come back. You have three minutes. State your name and address. Unmute button's in the lower left corner. It's a little microphone.
Okay, are you able to see, hear me now?
We can hear you.
But, but you're, I don't know if I didn't do something correctly to be able for you to see me. Sorry.
The lower left-hand corner, a little camera. You just click the camera and this little cross thing comes off and you're on screen.
I don't see a camera. I see Jeremy Smith.
Okay, maybe your screen's different than mine. But go ahead.
Oh, how's that?
There you are. There you are.
Okay, very good. Hello, I'm John Dillman at 100511 Airport Road, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I'm a regional sales manager for Beta Seed, and I've been employed for 24 years. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my concern with the ban on genetically engineered seeds and neonicinoids, and these bans should be reversed. Genetic engineered seed has promoted better soil microbial health, retaining organic matter and all-around soil improvement by transitioning to conservation tillage. Losing genetic engineered seed forces farmers to grow weed to control weeds mechanically with conventional tillage and increasing the use of herbicides. We provide only genetic engineered sugar beet seed to growers in every growing region in North America. If genetic engineered sugar beet seed is banned from Boulder County, there will not be any sugar beets grown. We apply neonicinoids to sugar beet seed at as it is the most efficient control for beet curly top virus, which is transmitted by the beet leaf hoppers. Beet curly top virus can be transmitted to another, a number of other crops and would become devastating to tomato, eggplant, pepper, and hemp growers. We do not provide sugar beet seed without treatment of neonics, which if the ban is not reversed, would make sugar beets extinct in Boulder County. There are no other counties in, in the sugar beet growing areas in North America that ban this product. Our seed processing equipment will not adapt to treating small quantities of seed without the neonics to allow the Boulder County growers to select the seed size to accommodate their planter and select the variety with the necessary disease package and high productivity to maximize profitability on the farm. Neonics are applied to each seed using the state-of-the-art pharmaceutical equipment at the rate of 24 grams per acre. Counter is the only other product label to control beet leaf hoppers and is applied at the rate of 9.8 pounds graker. Applying the neonic to each individual seed is similar to us taking a precise oral dose of a medication versus applying the medication to a large portion of our body. We treat sugar beet seed with a dust retardant and growers employ management practices to eliminate non-target exposure. And sugar beets do not flower, therefore it is not a concern for pollinators. Again, I support the commissioners reversing all of the bans and follow the, and allow the farmers to use the most advanced seed and pesticide technologies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. I understand Aiden had to drop off. And so we're to Alan Lewis. You're up, Alan. Three minutes. State your name and address, please. Lower left corner for your unmute when you're the camera.
Okay, good evening. Alan Lewis, 503 Dewey Avenue, Boulder. We were told we had bought a beautiful agroforestry wetland property on the east end of the county, and that it would be protected 26 months later, just before November's election. We were finally told the land would instead be desecrated with a sewage sludge plant. We were told this was to be our open space, but most of it is closed. I tried to walk through that wetland property and was threatened with rest.
State your name and address.
Hello, everybody. As stated before, my name is Jason Evenson. I'm the Beta Seed Brand Sales Leader, the leading supplier of sugar beet seed for Boulder County. I grew up on a sugar beet farm in Minnesota. I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in agriculture business. I've been involved in agriculture my entire life, specifically in the sugar beet industry for over fifteen years. I work at our corporate office, which is fifty seven oh five West Old Shakopee Road, Bloomington, Minnesota, five five four three seven. First off, I'm going to start off speaking to those these issues on the table from a practical standpoint as a seed supplier. Beta seed, sugar beet seed is not and has no plans to be available in the future without neonic seed treatments, at least for the foreseeable future until something comes along that is safer or is demanded by our customers. All seed treatments are applied pre-market entry and small batch treatments are not possible. It's important to note as well, this product is not used exclusively in Boulder County and it is offered and allowed in all other counties of North America where sugar beets are grown. As far as genetically engineered seed, Beta Seed also plans to continue with genetically engineered seed offer exclusively in all North American markets. This technology, as previously stated by others, has revolutionized sugar beet production, allowed producers to improve their land use, cut water use by thirty-three percent, reduce fuel consumption by fifty percent, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent. Once again, just like neonics, genetically engineered seed is also not exclusive to Boulder County. It is offered and allowed in all counties and states of the eleven North American sugar beet markets where our seed is grown. In my opinion, if the commissioners do not review and reverse all bans that allow farmers to use the most advanced seed and pesticide technologies available in the future and now, it appears highly likely that sugar beet crops will simply not be grown in Boulder County. I yield any remaining time I have back to the panel. Thank you very much.
I have one quick question, if I may.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Evenson, for being here this evening. Just a quick question, what I heard you say that one of the options in regards to alternative seeds would be if it was demanded by buyers or demanded by producers? How many, how many buyers and our producers are you talking about that you service with your company?
So we, we service all customers in North America, United States and Canada. A specific number I do not have, but it's in the thousands.
In that thousand, so what percentage of those buyers would have to demand a change in seed that isn't neonic seed for you to be able to really consider?
Well, I think the first thing that would have to happen is there needs to be a technology that comes along that is safer for the environment and also demanded by the customers and also does it reduce a fuel or doesn't provide, provide things that are more detrimental, to be honest to you, than the environment than there is now. There are some alternative options that were talked about. Those are very old technologies. The, as far as neonics, it's a very small amount that is put on the seed. When you start talking about chemicals applied overall, known carcinogen, so forth, that is a concern of ours as well. We feel that we're providing the most, the most economical, the most favorable for the grower and the safest products out there right now for the growers in Boulder County.
Is there any technology that you all are supporting right now that would be moving towards an alternative? We know a tech, technology is moving faster than we can all even consider.
Oh, exactly.
You have your, you have your ear to the ground in this particular industry.
Exactly, and we are always looking for, we are not tied to one thing or another. As a research-based company, we're always following science, whether it be genetically engineered, organic, it doesn't really make a difference. We're looking at everything that is the, the best for the grower and the environment. And as a research-based company, like I said, we follow the science and we certainly hope that the commissioners in Boulder County will as well.
Are you currently working on anything that would be an, an alternative from a technological standpoint right now that your company is supporting?
I'm not at the present time, as far as I'm aware, but I can check with our staff and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Jones, you're muted.
I'm not doing well that way tonight. So next up is John Dillman. Thanks, everybody, for your patience waiting to come back. You have three minutes. State your name and address. Unmute button's in the lower left corner. It's a little microphone.
Okay, are you able to see, hear me now?
We can hear you.
But, but you're, I don't know if I didn't do something correctly to be able for you to see me. Sorry.
A lower left-hand corner, a little camera. You just click the camera and this little cross thing comes off and you're on screen.
I don't see a camera. I see Jeremy Smith.
Okay, maybe your screen's different than mine. But go ahead.
Oh, how's that?
There you are. There you are.
Okay, very good. Hello, I'm John Dillman at one zero zero five one one Airport Road, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I'm a regional sales manager for Beta Seed and I've been employed for twenty-four years. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my concern with the ban on genetically engineered seeds and neonicinoids and these bans should be reversed. Genetic engineered seed has promoted better soil microbial health, retaining organic matter and all-around soil improvement by transitioning to conservation tillage. Losing genetic engineered seed forces farmers to grow weed, to control weeds mechanically with conventional tillage and increasing the use of herbicides. We provide only genetic engineered sugar beet seed to growers in every growing region in North America. If genetic engineered sugar beet seed is banned from Boulder County, there will not be any sugar beets grown. We apply neonicinoids to sugar beet seed at as, as it is the most efficient control for beet curly top virus, which is transmitted by the beet leaf hoppers. Beet curly top virus can be transmitted to another, a number of other crops and would become devastating to tomato, eggplant, pepper and hemp growers. We do not provide sugar beet seed without treatment of neonics, which if the ban is not reversed, would make sugar beets extinct in Boulder County. There are no other counties in, in the sugar beet growing areas in North America that ban this product. Our seed processing equipment will not adapt to treating small quantities of seed without the neonics to allow the Boulder County growers to select the seed size to accommodate their planter and select the variety with the necessary disease package and high productivity to maximize profitability on the farm. Neonics are applied to each seed using the state-of-the-art pharmaceutical equipment at the rate of twenty-four grams per acre. Counter is the only other product label to control beet leaf hoppers and is applied at the rate of nine point eight pounds graker. Applying the neonic to each individual seed is similar to us taking a precise oral dose of a medication versus applying the medication to a large portion of our body. We treat sugar beet seed with a dust retardant and growers employ management practices to eliminate non-target exposure. And sugar beets do not flower, therefore it is not a concern for pollinators. Again, I support the commissioners reversing all of the bans and follow the and allow the farmers to use the most advanced seed and pesticide technologies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. I understand Aiden had to drop off. And so we're to Alan Lewis. You're up, Alan. Three minutes. State your name and address, please. Lower left corner for your unmute when you're the camera.
Okay, good evening, Alan Lewis, five oh three Dewey Avenue, Boulder. We were told we had bought a beautiful agroforestry wetland property on the east end of the county and that it would be protected. Twenty-six months later, just before November's election, we were finally told the land would instead be desecrated with a sewage sludge plant. We were told this was to be our open space, but most of it is closed. I tried to walk through that wetland property when threatened with rest by a ranger. This is closed open space, he said. We were told we buy water rights with our land, but we spent a million dollars on sixty acres of crop land adjoining a ditch, then rented it to a farmer for twenty-four hundred dollars a year, which is less than what the county pays for its share of the ditch water. And we learned the tenant never uses the land, just lets it sit, takes his water out at a farm a few miles east. He grows nothing on those sixty acres being invasive weeds and that's in a county where one forty of our people don't have enough to eat. We were told we need science and farming experience, but when the top ag research institute in the country offered a set of shot here, set up shop here, we ran them off like horse thieves. We were told no more GMO crops or the glyphosate, dicamba and two four D sprayed repeatedly over soil injected with synthetic nitrogen. We kindly gave the farmers ten years notice to make arrangements. Then we were told we had to pay six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a fast stocking carpet bagger who promised to help farmers keep their GMO crops and chemicals on our land. And today we were forced to listen to two hours of outdated twenty-year-old wrong cherry pick science from industry spokespeople slapping a GMO red herring. We are told this whole open space effort was going to be sustainable, but we rent out land only a year at a time and let the tenant strip it of fertility and give us that contaminated, dirty dirt. We let farmhouses and barns decay to dust if we don't just sell them off. We were told soil health is key, but we were promised year after year after year that parks and open spaces still working on a plan to manage it. We know Parks and Open Space runs a show based on handshakes and promises that might be thirty-five years old now. We know they don't want us to look into the deep, dark honey pot that Boulder cropland has become, hence the GMO red herring. So taking stock of what we know and guessing at what we don't because we've not been told, it's like to be timed to end the open space sales tax. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up is Cindy Domenico. Welcome, Cindy. Good to see you. In three minutes, state your address and name, please. Microphone's in the lower left corner.
Hello, sorry, I'm, I can't get my camera up. Hang on a second. There we go. Well, good evening, commissioners and Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Cindy Domenico. I reside at five oh six Wilson Street, Lafayette, Colorado. I'm a former Boulder County Commissioner and I was a member of the Board of County Commissioners that adopted the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve cropland policy. The staff report presented today clearly outlines the depth of that work, our many hours of study of scientific literature on sustainable agriculture, input from members of the public, from our partner family farmers on the land and from our advisory committee, the tremendous staff and consulting research and the following deliberation at that time yielded a policy that was based on science and on a deep knowledge of our climate, soil and water availability in Boulder County, as well as what crops and rotations would be sustainable into the future. While the changes in twenty sixteen to the policy again emphasized sustainability, the ban approach to GE crop transition isn't working and has challenged the economic viability of current and future farmers, the stewards of our lands, as well as the sustainability progress that we might have made in that timeframe. We need to acknowledge that the investment of time and significant dollars over the last five years on the transition of GE crops has not yielded viable alternatives as noted, as noted in the staff report and hasn't moved us toward our sustainability goals. As Mike stated, the cropland policy is intended to help protect the viability of agriculture in Boulder County and the proposed changes brought forward by the staff recognize that. I support the staff recommendation shifting the policy to allow the previously approved GE crops and neonic seed coatings for beet seeds. Dr. Norton's earlier testimony was extremely persuasive in returning to this evidence-based approach. In addition, there's a great opportunity for the twenty twenty-one policy to adjust the focus of the program to outcome-based sustainability and to increase strong work on soil health. Building on what we've already accomplished in our open space program, we are perfectly positioned to take advantage of the legislature's work this past session on House Bill twenty-one eleven eighty-one to further improve soil health, working with the State Department of Ag. It's pretty exciting, actually. You know, over the years I've watched farm families pushed out of Boulder County by development and other pressures. Our wonderful open space program in the plains was built on helping sustain ag by working together with our farm families. As Paul Schlegel said on his testimony, generations of these families have been stewards of this land and they want to continue to do that. The focus on outcome-based sustainability would again allow the county to respect the diversity of land, farmers, cropping systems and crops that we want to support in Boulder County. I believe the county needs to build back the partnership with all our family farmers and now is the perfect time to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. Your timing was impeccable.
Thank you.
You've, you've been around. It's not your first rodeo, say that. So Sean Martini.
Thank you, commissioners. Sean Martini here. I'm Vice President and Advocacy with the Colorado Farm Bureau, where the state's largest agriculture organization representing agriculture producers across the state. And many of the Boulder County open space farmers are members of our organization and as such, we've been a part of this discussion on the county's cropland policy since before the transition plan was even created in twenty sixteen. We're really glad to hear that you, as the commissioners and staff, especially tonight, have taken such a thoughtful approach to looking at the transition plan and the current cropland policy. Farm Bureau has a long history of opposing bans and mandates on products and practices in the agriculture industry, frankly, because they're a fairly inelegant form of policy that usually creates more problems than it solves. And I would note that this dynamic is in play with the way the transition plan has morphed into the revised transition plan, how the annual check-ins have sort of failed to provide any real guidance to staff or the farmers themselves and how the proposed alternative crops aren't really a viable alternative as they may have once seemed. You know, you know, when crafting policy, whether it's in regards to climate change outcomes and goals or vaccine and COVID-related issues, you as policymakers are tasked to examine the best available science and base your decisions on that. And I think you've heard from a number of credentialed folks here, the science is becoming clearer and clearer since the transition policy was adopted, that the use of GE crops and the small amount of pesticides and herbicides that they are associated with and are paired with are, it's a very clear outcome. They create sustainable outcomes for Boulder County open space, both environmentally and economically and for the farmers that steward that land. We would urge you to move away from the current bans on these products and towards a more artful policy that focuses on measurable results. Let the data created by the farmers who work this land every day and the outcomes that they can achieve drive the policy. They've literally been doing this for generations. They're the best people to ground truth, the kinds of policy experiments that have been undertaken here. And I think they are very clear that the best place to go is to return to the twenty-twelve cropland policy that they themselves helped create. It's flexible and it's workable and it can help define and achieve measurable results, both for them, for the voters and the taxpayers of Boulder County and for the environment and the economy of the community. Thank you for your work on this and for the discussion this evening.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is John Schlegel. State your name for the record and your address, please.
John Schlegel, eighty-nine ninety-four Ogalala Road, Longmont. Good evening, commissioners and members of Prozac. My name is John Schlegel. I'm also a fourth generation Boulder County farmer. As, as my brother Paul said, my family has been farming in this area for a hundred and fourteen years. I am personally finishing harvest on my forty-eighth year of farming the same farm in Boulder County. Additionally, I think I'm the longest-serving tenant of Boulder County open space of at least twenty-five years on the Dodd farm. Today I'll hear from other members of my family who also farm here and hope to continue our family's tradition of sustainable and productive farming in the county into the future. When farmers embrace an agricultural tool or technology is because it has sustainable benefits that allow them to produce food in ways that better protect the soil, air and pollinators. In the case of GMO seeds, we have both the direct experience of our farmers and local research to demonstrate this. In twenty fifteen, a study was done by the CSU Ag Extension and Boulder County Parks and Open Space titled Economic, Environmental and Social Implications of Cropping Systems in Boulder County, which we call in our farmer group, the White Paper. The White Paper compared GMO conventional and organic cropping systems. The analysis found that farmers using GMO seeds used less water for corn and sugar beets when compared to organic or conventional corn. There's also incredible benefits found from GMO seeds and modern pesticides when it comes to carbon emissions. Conventional and organic corn release seven times more carbon from the soil compared to GMO corn and for conventional sugar beets, it's six times more carbon from the soil. The incredible reduction in water use and better carbon sequestration happened in part because GMO seeds and the safe pesticides we use with them allow farmers to use a practice called conservation tillage. This involves leaving the previous year's crop residue in place and only carving out a small strip to expose a little soil for planting. The farmer is able to leave the soil undisturbed and the lack of tilling of any kind or manual weed removal conserves water, sequesters carbon, protects topsoil and supports healthy soil. It's critically important to recognize the specific climate and growing conditions in your region when discussing cropping systems. While we are continuously experimenting and developing new practices, at this time, the only way to successfully do conservation tillage in Boulder County is with GMO seeds and modern pesticides. I find it very interesting that the phrase "follow the science" is on the news every day about how safe the COVID makes. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, John. On to Steve Sturkle, three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioner Jones, this is Assistant Clerk to the Board, Brianna Barber. I am not seeing Steve Sturkle in our attendee list right now, so just a reminder, if anyone's calling in on the phone to press star nine and we can promote you to speak. And at this time, I think it is safe. Oh, we do have someone raising their hand. I'm gonna give them permissions to speak. And we'll see if that works.
Okay.
And if that is you, Steve, you can press star six to unmute.
You there, Steve?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, yes, my name is Steve Sturkle. My address is three seven five two County Road seven Erie, Colorado, eight oh five one six.
Go ahead.
Okay, I am speaking to support the use of the GE seeds and treatments that are currently in place, allowing the farmers to use the the latest in science and genetics is the best option to ensure a strong agricultural enterprise. Farming comes with many risks. A significant amount of them are out of the farmer's control. Farming is a high-cost, capital-intensive operation. Most of the farmers rely on borrowed capital for input costs such as seed, fertilizer and fuel, as well as equipment purchases. I spent thirty-six years in the agricultural financing industry supplying capital for the needs of the farmers. The farmers that are successful are able to mitigate production risk and maximize output. The margins in farming are very slim. The yield reduction of a slight amount can mean the difference between being profitable and repaying your operating loans or not. Input costs continue to rise. For producers growing sugar beets, there is also a contractual and financial obligation to grow them. The penalty for not growing cannot be absorbed by other crops. The GE crops and treatments give the producer the efficiency to continue a viable operation. If their efficiencies are lost, it could impact the farmer's ability to obtain the necessary capital to fund their operations. I urge you to continue the use of the GE seed and the treatment technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Glad we got you in. Next up is Nick Colglazer. State your name and address for the record, three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nicholas Colglazer. I'm the Executive Director for the Colorado Corn Administrative Committee. I come before you today not to advocate for a particular position, but to provide information for your consideration. Our mission is building trust, driving sustainability and enhancing markets for all corn farmers in Colorado. In reality, we'll take a diverse array of production practices, whether it's grown corn grown organically in a traditional manner with non-GMO seed or conventionally to meet the market demands for corn. Ultimately, a farmer having as many production practice options available to them helps increase their chances of economic success by being able to choose the production practice that makes the most sense for their operation and gives the option to diversify their available production practices to meet market demands. Those tools are key to the success of the topic we are all talking about today, sustainability. Since nineteen eighty, corn farmers have reduced erosion by fifty-eight percent, decreased land use by forty-one percent and even lowered greenhouse gases by thirty-one percent per bushel. Farmers really have been ahead of their time and they're not done yet. This year, the National Corn Growers Association committed to further reduce erosion by thirteen percent, increase land use efficiency by another twelve percent and reduce greenhouse gases further by another thirteen percent. And that doesn't even count our focus on soil health. NCGA and the CCAC are both committed to ensuring enhanced sustainability of corn and the improvement of the soil used to grow our crops. To accomplish this feat, farmers will need many different tools at their disposal. And today, the conversation is focused around two, neonicinoids and GMOs. The use of both of these technologies have been linked to increased sustainability and the cultivation of corn. In the case of neonicinoids, these are critical products used by corn farmers every year. Farmers rely on neonicinoid seed treatments to protect their seeds from early season pests that attack corn seeds and seedlings when they are their most vulnerable. They are especially valuable for control of early season insect pests in corn, including seed corn maggots, wire worms, corn rootworm larvae and more. Applying these products via seed treatment allows for the precise application of pesticides to seed and because nearly all corn seed are treated before they, before the seed ever arrives at the farm, the risk of overapplication is very significantly diminished. Seed treatment also is an integral part of the integrated pest management plans and without access to seed treatments, growers would face early season exposure to critical pests and be forced to consider foliar applications of products that are less efficacious in controlling these pests and have greater exposure to insecticides for the surrounding environment, potentially killing even non-target beneficials in the process. The other is GMOs and they're another valuable tool to corn producers to enhance soil health and sustainability. GMO crops have allowed our producers to grow more crops on less land while using fewer pesticides and inputs. And with, and with how insect resistant traits work, there is no impact to the non-target beneficial insects. Because of GMOs, farmers have been able to adopt many BMPs like strip till and no-till that enhance the soil health and increases sustainability of our crop. The CCAC is committed to helping our state's corn producers increase the sustainability of our industry and improve the soil health of our farms. We have partnered with the CDA to encourage more corn producers to adopt these practices that lead this outcome. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Next is William Adams.
Hi, my name is William Adams. I live at one five zero two South Proctor Court in Superior, but I'm a professor who teaches at CU Boulder. I'm a professor in the Department of Ecology and Evolutionary Biology. I've been teaching a course on genetically engineered plants and crops since two thousand and four. And in two thousand and four, the conversations were centered on whether there is any harm to human health, to the environment or socio-economically when genetically engineered crops are grown. Today, with two decades of solid scientific evidence, the conversations instead are almost exclusively pertaining to the positive impacts on all three. And I personally encourage students to evaluate to what extent each engineered trait contributes to sustainable agriculture. Because I think that's the framework within which every approach to growing crops needs to be evaluated, whether or not it results in a greater level of sustainable agriculture. I have, I've been basically reviewing the literature continuously since two thousand and one and I can say that the scientific evidence is overwhelmingly positive in terms of safety to humans, in terms of positive impacts on the environment, as our previous speaker just mentioned, and I want to go into them. I thought I might specifically address BT corn. It's, the environment is cleaner, it's safer for farm workers and everyone else because you're not spraying toxic pesticides, uh insecticides that can drift and uh get into uh, I've heard of schoolchildren waiting at a bus stop. Not good with BT, you avoid that. Decreased labor, beneficial organisms are spared, decreased fossil fuel use, and CO2 emissions, uh CO2 emissions, and increased yields. And it expands beyond that. You get less mycotoxins in the corn. Uh, so that's beneficial to human uh health, because when the insects uh get into the corn, they transmit uh toxic or fungi that uh are pathogenic and also release toxins into the corn supply. Not good. The uh freshwater systems are uh enhanced. It also actually benefits organic farmers more than those that pay for the engineered seed, because it's so effective at suppressing the pests, and that's not only other corn farmers that grow it organically, but vegetable growers as well. It suppresses those insects. Herbicide resistance, I can talk about that too. Glyphosate is a class four herbicide. It's of the lowest toxicity and breaks down quickly compared to the harsher class one and class two herbicides that farmers would be forced to use if they aren't allowed to use glyphosate. I can talk about the safety of glyphosate, but I'm out of time. I can talk about organic versus uh non-organic. I can talk about all kinds of things. I sent a PowerPoint to you. Perhaps you'll have a chance to tie. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. We got a lot in there. Uh, Vicki Schlegel.
I have one question, if you don't mind, Mr. Adams, if you have another minute.
I do.
Thank you. That you, what I heard you say is that the suppresses insects um and that you, the way I understood it was it was a potential benefit to on the BTU corn.
Yes.
When you're saying insects, can you just briefly address the concern that we've seen and heard from comments about pollinators?
Okay, so uh pollinators are not impacted by BT. I've, I was concerned about that. I was, I had lots of concerns. I'm an ecologist. I had lots of concerns when I started looking into this as an ecologist, and uh bees were one of my particular concerns. But the BT uh is broken down in the guts of organisms that produce acids that basically break down the proteins. That's why it doesn't affect us when we consume BT corn or other BT crops. Uh, we break those proteins down. And bees have a similar gut, so bees are not impacted negatively. It's only the insect pests, and unfortunately, not all of them, but a lot of them that are attacking our crops and that are herbivores, that are actually consuming the crops, and they have alkaline guts, and therefore they don't break it down, and it actually, that's how it, it, it uh impacts the insect. It, it interferes with the gut system and they die very quickly.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, Vicki, state your name and address for us in three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Schlegel, 1260 County Road 20 and a half, Longmont. I'm married to a fourth-generation Boulder County farmer and the mother of a fifth-generation farmer. Proposing agriculture bans like the one being discussed today carry very real consequences for farmers and their families. We sometimes hear people say things like, oh, it's fine, you can just grow something else. But that's not the way this works. Farmers choose to grow what they grow for very specific reasons, and tying their hands with bans can be, have a very big negative impact. If they're forced to give up GMO seed advancements and go back to using older, potentially less safe pesticides, it's going to make their job of caring for the land so much more difficult. There are also very real financial consequences for farmers and their families. To last as a professional farmer and to be viable enough to pass the farming operation down, farmers must have the flexibility to use all the tools in their toolbox, particularly the ones that allow us to use our land efficiently and reduce crop losses. And for what it's worth, this also has an impact on our farmer's stress and mental health. Farmers devote their lives to caring for and improving the land that they farm on. They work incredibly hard, devote their time for improving the land that they farm. So, people who say things like, you don't need GMO or neonicotinoids often frame farmers as either too uninformed to know how to best grow foods or too callous to care about the theoretical damage they're accused of doing. This is not only completely untrue, it's also hurtful and insulting to our farmers as professionals and experts in their field. The financial and logistical unpredictability of these bans, along with the significant amount of time farmers have to take away from farming in order to try to advocate for themselves, like today, just add unnecessary stress to their situation. As I've stated, farming is an extremely stressful operation, and if we were to lose the ability to farm with GMO crops and neonicotinoids, we would be in a dire financial position and have to look at letting two of our long-term employees go. Both of these employees have worked for us around ten years each, or combined twenty years, and both have paid a very competitive salary. I ask you to set aside all the 2016 input bans, strike Appendix 13, and retire the ineffective transition plan. I would like to also ask the Commissioners to support a collaborative commitment to integrated pest management instead of banning any kind of chemistry, including neonicotinoids. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Uh, next up, Scott Schlegel.
My name is Scott Schlegel. I live at 1262 County Road 20 and a half, Longmont. I'm a fifth-generation Boulder County farmer, and my, and my family has been farming in this area for one hundred and fourteen years. I have two young children, and I hope that they will continue the family tradition and be the sixth generation local farmers. Part of what makes farming attractive to young people is the prospect of using advancement in act technology to make farming better, safer, more sustainable, and more efficient. I love that I can control and program the sprinklers from anywhere by using my smartphone. While planting sugar beets and corn this year, we were able to track, we were able to track precisely seed-facing soil moisture, soil temperature, seed depth, and soil-to-seed contact information. While doing this, it is all documented on my iPad for, for future references. When harvesting crops, we are able to record yield and moisture, and again, it is all recorded on an iPad. These are just a few of the technology improvements that we are using. Beyond that, I also want to be able to utilize existing and emerging seed technology that allows me to use land more efficiently, conserve water, protect topsoil, and overall have a stronger and more sustainable crop than I would without the advancement given to us by the GMO technology. I also don't want to return to these types of pesticides or the ways applying them that my dad had to use when he was first starting farming. It's important to understand that the pesticides, including neonicotinoid seed coatings that we choose to use is because they are safe, most sustainable, and allows the most minimal pesticide usage. If our innovation if our innovation far is our ban, it would reverse any advancement made in soil health and sustainability. All you need to do is look at our multi-year soil health and analyst to see what we have accomplished. As a longtime local farmer, it's always been happy to work with Boulder County and share a deep commitment to true sustainable agriculture, that we can best move forward together. It is turn our focus to measurable sustainability outcome, especially as it relates to soil health, carbon sequestration, and integrated pest management. I ask you to set aside all of the sixteen inputs, strike amended thirteen, and retire the inefficiency, the inefficiency transition plan. I would also like to ask the Commissioners to support a collaboration commitment to integrated pest management instead of banning any kind of chemistry, including neonicotinoids. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Good timing. Uh, Jules Van Tyn.
Hi.
Hey, Jules, the microphone's on the lower left side. Once you get on. And right by is the camera where you can unmute and turn on the camera.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I don't know if you can see me or not, but that's, that doesn't matter. Uh, good evening, Commissioners and members of POSAC. My name is Jules Van Tyn. I'm a third-generation Boulder County farmer, and my family has been farming in this area for a hundred and five years. I've always been proud to farm in this area and hope continue to do so as so sustainability in the future. I have served on the Boulder County Ag Committee. I've served on the Boulder County Task Force, GMO Task Force. I served on Crop Line Policy, and I've served on POSAC. Farmers aren't afraid of change. Whenever some sort of attempt is to make to restrict or limit the tools farmers can use, one of the underlying theories is that farmers are stuck in their ways and are afraid of change. As it happens in these kinds of conversations, that is not an accurate perception. There's no one more committed to the long-term sustainability of a piece of land than the farmer who relies on it for his livelihood and hopes to pass it on to his children and grandchildren. I have an eight-year-old grandson that somebody asked him the other day if he was going to be a farmer, and he stated he already is a farmer, so I hope he keeps that in his blood. As farmers, we believe in testing things out and doing our research and considering a new way of growing. And when we scale these things up gradually, to make sure that it can be successful and sustainable. On our own, in addition to all of the collaboration we do with Boulder County Parks and Open Space and county's consultants, our group of farmers participates in all kinds of research trials and experiments. For example, I have done a bean project with Boulder County uh with a pinto bean project for the last two years, and as part of my rotation, which I think is probably one of the most positive things for me personally that came out of Crop Line Policy is a, is a two-year, two out of four uh planting of GMOs, and then in between, we rotate out to a non-GMO. So a pinto beans now has become a part of my rotation with GMOs. And uh this last year, we provide uh pinto beans now for all the Boulder Valley School District and some food pantries in northern Colorado, which we're very, very proud of that project. I also worked this year with Longmont Soil Conservation District on a demonstration plot that is on my farm that has a CE on it. Uh, we have had now up to date sixty people that have been interested in seeing the project that has uh conventional till, strip till, no-till as part of it, different plant populations, a drought-tolerant hybrid that I think the county should really consider in the future, and uh and uh different plant populations, which uh I think is going to be very interesting to see how it turns out. And also because of our ongoing commitment to soil health, we have been participating in Elizabeth Black's Citizen Soil Health Project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jules. Uh, next up is Jennifer Music. State your name and address for us, Jennifer, in three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of POSAC. My name is Jennifer Music. I'm a fourth-generation farmer, and my family's been farming in this area for a hundred and ten years. I have a bachelor's degree in animal science and agriculture business from CSU, and I'm proud to be a self-employed woman in production agriculture. I farm alongside my husband Chad, who also comes from a farm family, and we hope to continue our family's traditions of sustainable and productive farming in this county into the future. As someone who's been in farming my whole life and who has a social media account, I'm well aware of what many non-farmers say about agriculture. There's a perception among some people that farmers don't care about sustainability, that we're just spraying pesticides randomly or growing food in ways that damage the earth, either because we don't know better or because we don't care. This belief is the root of why non-farmers advocate for bans like what we're discussing today. They use these kinds of policies to restrict tools in our toolbox and lock us into just one way of growing. They want to limit our capacity to make decisions. However, this idea that farmers aren't concerned about environmental sustainability doesn't stand up to logic. Farmers are the original conservationists. There's nobody who cares more about the long-term sustainability and viability of the land than the farmer who, farmers who livelihood depends on it. But farming isn't just a source of income. It's our heritage, identity, and way of life. Farmers don't just preserve the land, they actively work to improve it every year. Many of us have invested significant amounts of money in equipment and infrastructure that directly benefits publicly-owned land, and we're constantly experimenting and innovating to make what we do better. Farming has to be economically sustainable to survive too. If a policy removes effective tools from the toolbox, farmers stand to experience significant crop damages and reduced yield. This kind of additional challenge to the economics of local farming could be devastating and is not sustainable for the future of Ag in Boulder County. The lack of understanding that the general public has about agriculture and local farmers makes it even more disheartening to think that policy discussions, which should be based on science and measurable outcomes, instead risk being swayed by non-farming citizens with no experience but lots of fear and misinformation. The way we feed people and care for our natural resources is important. We owe it to future generations to follow the science and listen to experts, not craft policies to try and appease the fear of some folks in the public. These restricting bans directly impact our family's operation and force us to abandon many useful practices that have been established throughout decades of hard work. I've always been happy to work with Boulder County and share a deep commitment to truly sustainable agriculture. The way we can best move forward is to turn our focus to measurable sustainability outcomes, especially as it relates to soil health, carbon sequestration, and integrated pest management. I ask POSAC and the Commissioners to set aside all of the 2016 input bans. Let's strike Appendix 13 and retire the ineffective transition plan. Instead, let's work together on outcome-based sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, next up is.
I have a question, excuse me, Commissioner Jones, if you have an extra minute here. And what I'm, thank you for, for participating this evening. You're, you're maybe the third person that's talked about integrated pest management, and I just wonder if you could give a, like, one to two sentences on what, what does that mean to you?
Um, for me, I guess, you know, we've tried things with pollinator habitats and such. I know there's a lot of guys in the county that have done that. Kind of integrating that pest management best. So as the gentleman a little bit ago was um talking about, you know, what are we doing that's hurting those pests, or what are we doing that's not affecting another pest? So kind of just, you know, in the broad scope of things, integrating it to where we are being helpful to, sorry, got him on the spot, where we're, where we're all being helpful to make the ecosystem work altogether. So how are we taking care of the pests that are harmful to us, but also sustaining the pests that are necessary, such as pollinators, that help us farm?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, Mario Gomez, are you there? In three minutes, uh, state your name and your address.
Commissioner Jones, this is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. At this time, we're not seeing Mario in our attendee list unless they are calling in over the phone. So just a reminder, if someone is calling in on the phone and wants to leave a comment, please press star nine, so you can raise your hand, and then we will promote you. And I don't see any hands raised, and so we can move on to Stephen Stewart. We were having a technical issue promoting that person, and we're working uh on doing that now, so give us just a moment, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you get in, Stephen, if you just unmute and let us know you're here?
Commissioner Jones, this is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Again, I apologize for this technical issue. I think we can move on to I think we can move on to Famir Rasmussen Jr. We have been able to promote that person. If they could just unmute their microphone in the bottom left.
If Famir, if you would like to do that, three minutes, give us your name and address, please. I'm not hearing anything. The microphone's down the lower left corner to unmute and to turn on your camera. Well, no luck. Are they in the, I guess I can look here in the panelists. I don't see them.
I can see the name.
Yeah, there we go. They are unmuted. Are you ready to testify?
This is Keith Schlegel. Are you still looking for Famir?
I believe so, Keith. Give us just another second. Thank you.
No problem.
Is he with you? No, he's in front of you.
No.
Okay. Bri, I don't see that. Are you trying to remote Famir?
We have been able to promote Famir. This is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. And maybe they're having some technical issues. It shows they're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything. So I've gone ahead and put the phone number to call into this webinar into the chat as a direct message to that person. And so if you'd like to, in the meantime, we can go to Keith Schlegel.
Let's do that. Keith, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name's Keith Schlegel. My address is 1266 County Road, 20 and a half, Longmont. I'm a member of, fortunately, I'm privileged to be a member of a longtime multi-generation Longmont farm family, as well as a Boulder County property owner and taxpayer. I encourage the Commissioners to carefully consider the implications of crop policy going forward. I believe it's essential that the crop land policy support all aspects of sustainability, including the financial aspects. In order to keep Boulder County open space programs thriving, it's imperative that the farmland remains both productive and profitable from an agricultural perspective. Losing either of these aspects will result in unnecessary tax burden on future generations. Currently, crop lands that implement the latest farming techniques are mostly revenue positive, but still many of those crop lines require repairs and improvements that are currently underfunded. Any influence that would make them less productive would just result in additional items not being properly maintained on the crop lands. Because the crop lands are currently profitable using the method, these current modern farming methods, some farmers have taken it upon themselves to use their own money and time to install items such as center pivot sprinklers and underground irrigation pipelines. These infrastructure improvements not only significantly improve the conservation aspects of the crop lands, but they make them more financially viable. The best way to ensure agriculture remains viable on these lands is to allow the family farmers to continue to operate and maintain the land using the latest farming technologies. As in all the industries, in order to remain competitive and financially viable, businesses need to continually produce more with less. Otherwise, they will cease to exist. And agriculture is no exception to this rule. Like other industries, this increased productivity is mostly accomplished through the use of new technologies. For ag, these new technologies include things such as advanced mechanization, efficient irrigation methods, and in particular, the use of the latest seeds and pesticides. If Boulder County Commissioners put highly burdensome constraints on these farmers, they will cease to exist and therefore not be around to provide good stewardship of this land. This would not only result in the loss of a critical part of the county's heritage, but would also put the open space project at risk due to the significant financial burden it would create in order to maintain and operate these properties in the future. I highly encourage Boulder County Commissioners to make the right choice and reverse all bans and allow farmers to use the most advanced and safe crop production methods available. This may not be an easy choice, but the correct path forward for the county. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Have you any luck with Famir? Bri, I see him listed.
Hi, Commissioner Jones. We are trying to get them to call in on the phone, and I think we're just still having a technical issue that I'm going to head, or I'm actually testing right now at the moment, so we can move forward in the speaker list, if that's okay. Oh, sorry, one second. It looks like we do have someone calling in on the phone raising their hand, so I'm gonna allow them to speak.
Yeah, this is Famir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Famir. You have three minutes to state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Famir Rasmussen Jr., 1342 Trail Ridge Road in Longmont. I want to thank you for your time this evening. My family and I have been farming in this area for about 80 years now. I'm proud to farm in Boulder County and hope to continue doing so sustainably into the future. I lease county land as part of my family farming operation, and I grow a good amount of sugar beets. Colorado sugar beet farmers are all part of the farmer-owned co-op. Though this co-op structure, the farmers are responsible for a certain number of sugar beet shares. We must grow those shares every year or risk penalties from the co-op. We do not have the option to just decide not to plant sugar beets and to grow something else instead. Interestingly, it was Boulder County's ag staff that was responsible for encouraging many of the county's farmers to initially purchase those sugar beet shares. Back at the time of the purchase, the county supported the growing sugar beets here and recognized that they were a good crop for the farmers. So farmers followed the county's advice and purchased the shares. And now we have a responsibility to follow through on them. Sugar beets are grown in only 14 states in this country. They are a crop that is well-suited to Boulder County's unique climate, which is why so many of us grow them. Technically, advancement, including but not limited to GMO seeds and neonic seed coatings, have allowed us to grow sugar beets in increasingly sustainable ways. We're able to use less water and pesticides and grow using conservation tillage, so we barely disturb the ground and greatly improving our soil health. Sugar beets are also an important element in financial viability for Boulder County's farms. Technology allows us to grow a strong crop consistently, and it's not an exaggeration to say that many farmers simply could not find ways to replace the income they would lose if they were not able to grow sugar beets. Other speakers will talk today about the sustainability benefits of sugar beets compared to environmental devastation that often comes with sugar cane production. But suffice to say that we should all be proud that you can walk into a King Supers and find a Western Sugar Co-op bags available, ready for you to bake cookies or make jam. As a longtime local farmer, I've always been happy to work with Boulder County and share a deep commitment to truly sustainable agriculture. The way we can best move forward together is to turn our focus to measurable sustainability outcomes, especially as it relates to soil health, carbon and integrated pest management. I asked POSAC and Commissioners to set aside all of 2016 input bans as part of this new focus on measurable outcomes. Let's strike Appendix 13 and retire the ineffective transition plan. Instead, work together on outcome-based sustainability.
Hey Famir, thank you so much. I think Marta Loschman might have a question for you.
I did, Marta. If you have another moment, thank you. I appreciate that. You touched on something that we haven't heard specifically this evening in testimony, but saw in the comments in 163, 173 written comments before this started. You talked about, which I also saw was the comment from community members just saying, "sugar beet growers, just grow something else," and I say that in quotations. And I wonder if you could, the questions come up a couple times, and we've talked to a few different people this evening asking, and I wonder if you're comfortable to give us some type of an idea of what that cost really is for sugar beet growers here in Boulder County, what the penalties are. And also, you talked about being encouraged by Boulder County staff to either add on to your contract, to get into contract with Western Sugar. Would you take a few more minutes and just tell us what you can about that process?
Okay, first of all, the fine that we're talking about to Western Sugar, it's not so much the money, it's the product that they need to go through that factory to take care of the company itself and be sustainable. And you also have to remember that not only what happens to us here in this area, that the sugar beet company has beets in other states, and it also affects those other farmers.
Okay.
And as far as just jumping to another crop, it just doesn't happen. It's not, it's not succinct. It just doesn't work. We're committed to that co-op, that my family's been raising beets for about 80 years now, and it's always been an important part of the family and the operation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, I hope it helped you.
Oh, yeah. No, I appreciate you taking another couple minutes. Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome.
All right, Dan Lisco is up next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of POSAC. First, I would like to take the opportunity to applaud all three of you Commissioners. You've spent a significant amount of time this summer coming out and visiting our farms, trying to understand the situations that we are in, and trying to understand agricultural in general. And I just wanted to applaud you for taking the time to come out and visit with us on our farms and see the vast agricultural opportunities in eastern Boulder County. My name is Dan Lisco. Again, I'm at 6936 J Road in Boulder, Colorado, 80301. I'm a third generation farmer. I'm lucky to have both sides of my family in agriculture. One family resides in Wyoming and runs ranching and farming operations, and the other family resides in Colorado, and we run farming and ranching operations in Colorado. I've had the opportunity to farm in Boulder County for 40 years. We have an immense livestock operation as well as a forage crop operation. I'd like to take, to strongly encourage the county to reframe your approach on the neonic's and the pesticide reduction. Instead of focusing on restricting this chemistry like the neonic's, I think a better path would be to make a commitment to supporting the integrated pest management practices of the county-owned land. Marta asked a question about what that means to us, and for example, I can tell you that we watch the beneficial insects on our corn plants. And the ladybugs and stuff are beneficial insect, and we have an issue with spider mites occasionally. And through our crop consultants and the crop consultants we use, we start to see the beneficial starting to build, and therefore, we haven't had to spray for spider mites in many, many years. Occasionally, we do not see the beneficials, and so we have to go ahead and and use a chemical to reduce those. But that's just one example of how we use the integrated pest management. Another example would be with the neonic seed treatments. We don't have to go in and spray an insecticide on the soil that would kill many of our beneficial insects, because the neonic's are attached to the seed coating, and so only the insect that attacks the seed coating is going to perish from the neonic herbicide. Therefore, you know, that's one of the ways we look at integrated pest management. We grow a lot of forage crops. We use this integrated pest management system in our alfalfa rotations. Every year, in this particular part of Colorado, we have to look at alfalfa weevils, and we wait till we have a, you know, a threshold that is an economic threshold that forces us to use some kind of a prevention so that we can preserve our crops. And some years, we don't have to do that. A commitment to...
Just wrap up. If you could wrap up, Dan, time's up.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So if I could just wrap up, I'd like to see you guys strike Appendix 13 out of the Crop Land Policy. I was part of the Crop Land Policy. I'd like to go back to 2012 and move forward with a program that allows our young farmers to benefit in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead.
Commissioner Jones, could I ask Dan a question here? Yeah, thank you. Just, so I think a lot of you have testified about financial viability. And I'm wondering whether, well, and I think there's some assumption that farmers use pesticides and herbicides indiscriminately, you know, that you'll just reach for, somebody used the term industrial agriculture. Are these chemicals expensive to use? Could you talk a little bit about the economics of using pesticides and herbicides?
Yes, they are expensive to use. A lot of the chemicals, a lot of the herbicides, depending on what we're talking about, you're looking at upwards to $30 to $40 per acre for each application. If you can reduce, you know, that trip through the field with using a herbicide or an insecticide, you're actually gaining a little bit more towards your profit. And so I guess that would be the way I would answer that, is you know, every trip, the fewer trips we can make, you know, we increase our chance of profitability. And when we go away from the sugar beet crops and some of the high corn crops or the higher-end corn crops, you know, some of these, your grass crops, your alfalfa crops, they don't have as large of a gross income as some of the other crops, so that starts to make a lot of difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Keith Bateman, you're up next. State your name and address, please.
Can, I don't see myself. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Keith. Down there in the lower left corner is a little camera where you can turn it on by getting across.
Keith Bateman, 1819 North 119th Street, Lafayette. Good evening, Commissioners and POSAC members. I'd like to thank you for the time to come in on this. And I'd also like to say that being a longtime generational farm family here in Boulder County, we feel like we're one of the blessed ones to get to farm in this county, enjoying our views and the wildlife and everything that we have here. I'm Keith Bateman. I'm fifth generation farmer. My family's been farming in this area for 160 years. We ate off Wanaka Home City down on Coal Creek, where 287 crosses Coal Creek, and there's the Wanaka Stage Stop is designed there. I grow a wide variety of crops, from gumbo corn to grassy, organic vegetables.
We lost you, Keith. Right at organic vegetables. Do you inadvertently mute yourself in the lower left-hand corner? Still don't hear you, Keith. He might have muted himself down there in the microphone in the lower left-hand corner. Or you could turn off your camera. Sometimes that helps connectivity.
Hi, Commissioner Jones. Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. It looks like we did lose Keith, so hopefully he can rejoin the meeting and we can give him those last two minutes. I will say that Steve Stewart appears to be on the meeting again. And um if you'd like to go back to him, we can get his comment to try and um go back to him, or we can proceed on to Chad Music.
Uh, why don't we do Chad and then go to Steve Stewart? Chad's already on here. Go ahead, Chad Music, uh state your name and address in three minutes.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners and members of POSAC. My name's Chad Music, one four six six one, County Road five, Mead. I'm a third generation farmer. My wife and I farm roughly two thousand acres of sugarbeets, corn, wheat, coors, barley, and alfalfa in the Longmont area. We farm alongside my grandfather, brother, and my wife's family as well. Farming is our livelihood, and we hope to be able to continue to do this in this area. As a young farmer, I feel it's imperative to be able to use the technologies that are available within agriculture. With the use of genetically engineered crops, we have been better able to implement the method of conservation tillage. We're able to leave the previous year's crops residue as organic matter, which reduces soil erosion and also prevents water runoff during the winter. In the spring, we can make one tillage trip and plant our seeds, thus leaving a smaller carbon footprint than previous cropping methods. We soil test all of our ground annually to ensure proper soil health. With the use of genetically engineered crops, engineered seed, we are better able to manage the land, only applying what is needed in a very small, precise amounts instead of the broad spectrum of fertilizer or chemical that we use to use without technical guidance. Water is a scarce and expensive resource in Colorado. And when drought years come, the farmer gets the last straw for water use. Thankfully, there are now drought tolerant traits available within certain seed varieties, which provide a very climate-smart approach. Um, approach within increased water efficiency. We can still grow a successful corn crop in environmentally stressed conditions with the use of trait technologies. It is critical, especially as young farmers, that we are able to use the best of the science-based, safety-tested agricultural methods, which allow us to grow food in a way that is increasingly sustainable and productive, contributing to a local food system and participating as a business owner in a local economy. All of the challenges over the last five years of this transition plan framework have shown that trying to ban input creates unintended consequences and does not improve sustainability. I ask POSAC and the member commissioners to set aside all of the twenty sixteen input bans, let's strike appendix thirteen, and retire the ineffective tran- retire the ineffective transition plan and instead work together on outcome-based sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We'll go up to Stephen Stewart. Stephen, are you there? It's lower left-hand corner for the mic, uh, turn on your mic or and your camera. I'm not saying anything, Brian. Do you want to go to Keith Bateman for now?
Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. I think that is appropriate. I'm not sure if Keith's microphone is working at this moment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Hello.
Go ahead, Keith. You were talking about organic something when you got cut off.
Hmm, uh, yeah, hopefully that's work. I have a bad internet connection out here. Uh, I live out in the country, so that's one of the unperks, I guess you'd have to say. I grow organic vegetables in forage. Uh, as others will talk about, the family farmers are innovating all the time. I'd like to talk about just a few of the things that local farmers have tried, because it's really important to understand that successful farming is complicated and nothing is easy as it seems. When we talk about wanting to keep all the tools in the toolbox, like the ability to grow GMO, we're sometimes told that's fine. You can just grow and fill in the blank instead. But the people who say that have no idea how difficult it can be to actually find a successful replacement crop. And we've done some of that with the transition plan. Uh, some things that we've tried, I've set trees, bread company with the idea that we could grow wheat for the company. However, there is so much wildry in Boulder County that the riper consistently contaminated the wheat, so it did not meet the standards of the bread company, and they wouldn't buy it. I've also unsuccessfully tried to grow field peas. We had yield problems for forage. Sunflowers in the nineties, we had way too many birds around here, and they'd eat about half of them. High-fiber barley for ardent mills, and they ended up moving that to Montana because their springs are a lot cooler and they had a lot better quality than here. Uh, also, uh, one farmer was considering joining his colleagues who grow barley for a local large brewery. However, the soil in his particular farm is such that barley grown on that land has a protein content that's too high for the breweries' standards. An organic farmer acquired a significant amount of new acreage. He knew the local markets and market supplies wouldn't support such a drastic increase in the same vegetables, so he decided to uh to try organic feed corn. It turns out that a specialty process and facility is needed for large volumes of organic feed corn. And so the Boulder farmer ended up trucking his corn all the way down to Texas. I would like, I would urge the commissioners uh to lift all the bans on all the inputs and go to a soil health, carbon sea restoration, IPM, outcome-based uh
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to Scott Miller.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Scott. Go ahead, three minutes, name and address.
Yeah, my name's Scott Miller. I live at seventeen hundred South one hundred and fourth Street in Brumfield, Colorado. Um, I appreciate to you commissioners and members of POSAC for taking time tonight to hear about, hear on this issue. Um, I know for a lot of people, it probably doesn't seem like that big a deal, but this is a major issue for agriculture in Boulder County. It's going to affect farmers for years to come. Um, I'd like to address um not so much how this affects me as a farmer, but I'm looking more at open space and the benefit and how we've, how we take care of our open space farmland here in general. You know, since two thousand and sixteen, I heard Mike Foster say that we've spent over a million dollars trying to implement this transition plan that, you know, I sat on POSAC, we voted against it. Um, you know, and but it still came to be, and we've, you know, a million dollars. And, you know, and we don't have any solutions, and that's there, you know, we tried research, we tried, you know, ad consultants, you know, and there, those are all great things to spend money on with the right goal, but, you know, this was a this was a flawed premise, and it was never going to work. And I look at what we, you know, what the county could have done with that million dollars to help agriculture. You know, putting in irrigation pivots and save water, putting in, you know, buying more water rights for land that shore on water, developing packing sheds or washing stations for the smaller farms that do produce. I mean, a million dollars, you know, I know the county's budget's not a lot, but for the farmers, I mean, you could do a lot of money, and you could have done, made a lot of improvements to your farms in that time. You know, not only that, I mean, you look at all the time your ag staff spent on this. You look at all the time the farmers have spent on this. We've done test plots. You know, that we've worked with ag staff on test plots and your and your ad consultants on these things. It hasn't really gotten any outstanding results or solutions. You know, we've gone through meetings, we've gone through trainings, you know, and it was all about making sure that, you know, how to do it without using this GE seed or this pesticide. You know, it's, you know, you guys are focused on the wrong things. Figure out how to make the farms better. You know, everyone, you know, I heard someone talk about industrial extraction farming. I've been farming down Rock Creek for twenty years. If I'm doing extraction farming, I'm obviously not doing a very good job because we're still here and I'm still selling pumpkins. So obviously, I'm not very good at that. Um, but you guys, you know, we're focused on the wrong thing. This, this appendix needs to go away. The neonic ban needs to go away. You need to let farmers farm the way they should, the way every other farmer in America is farming. You know, we'll do the right thing. You know, we already were using, you know, we're using strip till. We're using, you know, no till. Those are important things. GMOs are part of that, and I appreciate you considering this policy again. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next is Richard Miller. State your name and address, three minutes, please.
Excuse me, Commissioner Jones. Scott, if you have just another moment.
Sorry, Scott, are you still there?
Yeah.
Thanks, Scott. If you have just another minute, thanks for for jumping back in. Uh, I had a question, and when you're talking about that million dollars spent on the transition plan, um, and just wanted to know if you could I I I have, I I had some of those questions initially and 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 concerns around what I was looking at in the transition plan for two thousand and nineteen, the not just the SWOT analysis, not just the meetings, not just the the presentations, all those pieces, but really would like to hear from you about the contract with MATA Ag. If there's any specific pieces, one of the, the understanding, one of those commitments was the economic viability piece, and just want to know your experience with that in in regards to what kind of plan was given, presented, discussed, reviewed.
Yeah, I talked about that. Um, you know, I actually, I met with Commissioner uh Lee Jones about about MATA Ag and back right before they came on, because we were getting, nothing was happening with the transition, and the timeline was ticking down. You know, and I basically went in and said, hey, you know, you're trying to get, you want us to change what we're doing. You know, with one hand tied behind our back, and and we're telling you we can't figure it out, you need to, you know, if you think there's a solution, you need to bring somebody in to help us explore those ideas. And they brought MATA Ag to the table, and they had a big pitch, and you know, and, you know, but the bottom line is, what we needed isn't not only economically viable crops that'll pencil out, but you have to have a market to take it to. And, you know, I I sat through a meeting where they brought in a lentil grower from Montana and talked about the viability of that, and as a crop, it may have had viability here, but there's nowhere in Colorado that you can process lentils. So that makes the cost, you know, doesn't make it effective as a crop. You know, even, you know, they talk about growing non-GE corn, growing conventional corn, and having, you know, and, you know, and getting a premium for it. I I know the, I know one of the other farmers that's no longer on Boulder County Open Space um was growing conventional corn, but, you know, the person that was willing to buy it and pay a premium would only take one truckload once a week for however long it took to get the whole crop. You know, so it all had to be put in storage, and there wasn't storage available. Um, I know another farmer who was growing organic, you know, was trying to grow organic or transitional organic corn and get that premium. But again, there was nowhere locally that wanted it, and to get that premium, it had to be trucked to Texas. You know, there goes all your profit. You know, it's, the biggest problem is that you know, there's been a lot of programs in the meantime where we've studied things like, you know, to improve soil health and things like that, which we're always doing for like compost and manures and things like that. But when it came to actually finding an alternative to growing sugarbeets or GE corn, there was never a viable option. The heritage wheats that I think that Mike Foster talked about, you know, like the entire demand for the entire industry was less than like two or three acres. You know, that doesn't replace a thousand acres of corn and sugarbeets. And and that's where we kept running into. It's not just finding a, you know, it's not, you're never going to find, I mean, those giant commodity crops, everybody knows what they are. They, you know, there's not going to be a crop that there's a demand for a thousand acres of that isn't actively grown. So you're looking at finding a whole bunch of little niche crops to try to fit those deals, and that's not an easy task. So, you know, I mean, the attempts were there, but, you know, they couldn't find anything, and which was what we were saying too before they brought them in.
I I appreciate that. I have one other question, because quite frankly, I was expecting someone to talk about COVID nineteen. And I haven't heard that come up in in the testimony this evening, and that was one of the questions I had initially and would like just your opinion, if you're comfortable, about how the global pandemic may or may not have affected the contract with MATA Ag, um, just looking at the timeframe of the work that was to be done.
Um, from my perspective?
Yeah, just your personal.
It didn't affect, it didn't affect us. We did our, we did our trials last year. Um, I don't know as far as looking, looking for markets. I I never saw that they had anything major to bring to us. Um, you know, in growing, trying to just grow conventional corn, you know, uh, Mike Foster brought up earlier about growing conventional corn, and like, we'd have to be kind of figuring out how to adjust to that. But the thing is, at some point in time, most of us have grown conventional corn and know what's involved, and that's why we're so hesitant to do it, because we know what the pesticide impacts are going to be as a result of it, not just on the corn itself, but how that impacts all the other crops that grow in our rotations. And, you know, MATA Ag kept sitting there and touting, well, we know places that are growing corn conventionally with less pesticides. And on multiple occasions, I said, great, show me what they're doing, and I never saw it. So you know, I, you know, I, I don't know, I think they had good intentions, but I, they just, you know, it just didn't pan out, and it was, you know, a waste of money, in my opinion. You know, there's just a lot of other things we could have done with that money that would have been a lot more beneficial to your open space properties.
Thank you, Scott. I really appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, next up is Richard Miller. Uh, state your name and address in three minutes, Richard.
Yes, uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, my name is Dick Miller, and uh I live on uh my home farm uh just north of Lafayette, and also uh I'm a tenant of the open space program with three other farms. Um, uh, actually, since nineteen ninety-six, uh, so uh we've been a partner with the county a long time. Excuse me, my request and my um thoughts are short and sweet. Um, I feel that you guys need to rely on the experts in agriculture, which happen to be your partners, which are your tenants. Um, the uh the farmers that you have uh luckily got to farm your open space have hundreds of years of experience and practical knowledge. And I think the knowledge of our group uh far exceeds that of your open space ag division and uh, you know, out-of-state consultants that you brought in for a lot of money. Um, you know, it's, my message is short. Um, I think, and I would hope that US commissioners uh would take the stance that you'll let us farm within the legal framework, framework and guidelines of the USDA and the EPA to be economically sustainable for ourselves and for the county. The, it's set up to where what we do if we're allowed to use a technology is the most sustainable, both to the land and the environment. So I'm hoping that you guys will see fit to uh reverse your restrictions on GMO technology and uh the transloaded, translocating insecticides, which are neonicicides. These products are really acting much like vaccines act in people. They're preventative technology to not have a problem versus using pesticides to solve the problem um later on. So I I guess my message is, I I would hope as a taxpayer in Boulder County to that you guys would use your wisdom and uh and not invest your time in trying to micromanage a bunch of farms in the Boulder County Open Space Program. And uh, you know, it's, and leave it to the people that have done it for hundreds of years, and uh thank you.
All right, thank you, Richard. Arlene Pinner, uh, state your name. All right. Thank you, Richard. Arlene Penner, state your name for the record, three minutes and your address.
Yes, this is Arlene Penner, 12177 Baseline Road, Lafayette, Colorado. And now I currently live in Chapel, Nebraska. I want to thank you for having this meeting and allowing me to speak tonight. My husband and I have farmed in in that county for all of our career. We farm for the city of Boulder. And the things that are happening to the people that are farming for the county right now are the things that we endured and the, and the things that you're promoting and those are the policies that you're wanting to go to are the things that we endured for our entire career. They became so unbearable that when we had opportunities to sell some of our ground, we did and we left. I don't want to talk to you about science. I don't want to talk to you about soil health. I want to talk to you about the most valuable asset that you have. Those are your, your local farmers. Those are the farmers. Those are your tenants. The county of Boulder cannot hire enough people and machinery to maintain the farm ground that you have acquired in this, in the manner that you want it to be maintained at. If all of those farmers leave, these are my friends and I've watched them struggle and I've watched the stress on their faces. Please do not allow them to continue to struggle like they are. Please don't let their, those, these regulations be damaging to their businesses. These men have worked for years and years and years and generations and generations. If, if you want to do something for agriculture in Boulder County and for your open space, please repeal these silly GMO bans and these neonicotid bans. There are not markets for alternative crops. As Scott Miller stated earlier, we are the people who had the corn in the bin that was conventionally grown. Every six weeks, the guy would make an appointment and they would show up and they'd take one semi-load. We moved from that farm in 2017. There is still corn in that bin. I'm waiting for him to pick up. When we've, we've moved out here to Western Nebraska, our yields have increased by a third. We're now allowed to grow crops that are genetically modified and we're having a wonderful life. I can tell you that I am probably your worst enemy if I come to, to ask my friends to leave. I want them to enjoy the life that I have and the simplicity of life that I have gotten from moving away from that. So please be considerate of my friends and my neighbors and repeal this silly ban. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Arlene. Next is Nancy Davis. Are you here, Nancy?
I am here.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes. Name and address, please.
This is Nancy Davis. It's 10975 Lookout Road, Longmont. I'd like to address the process by which things like this cropland policy come about. I believe that Boulder County must set aside any ego-driven ambitions about being sustainability leaders and instead, as the first speaker said, take scientifically substantiated accent, action, which may or may not be popular or make great soundbites. It's essential that we do not use catchy terms and misguided policies to cause more harm than good. I'd like to speak to the compost piece of the recommendations regarding the county's industrial composting project at the forum held by CU Center for Sustainability or Sustainable Landscape in Communities. Two of Boulder County's biggest farmers asserted that the project didn't make sense financially, that application of the project, product wasn't feasible, that rather than improving soil health, the product would eliminate organic certification and contaminate their crops, organic or not, and that they hadn't even been consulted about this enormous destructive, expensive project. In other words, a lot of money and many hours of staff time were spent on a project to produce something without ever establishing that there were end users. Now it appears that Boulder County may compel farmers to use compost. In other words, since there weren't substantial end users, Boulder County would coerce farmers into being those end users. This policy further reminds farmers of Boulder County and its consultants no better than they do about how to farm their own land. Industrial composting resulting in land application of sewage sludge is dangerous, spreading PFOS, which is forever chemicals and other toxic chemicals on our ag lands. The National Sierra Club is hosting a webinar about commercial composting on October 27th and planning to send you the link and I truly hope you'll attend. The cropland policy says, quote, addition of compost and/or manure helps to provide soil nutrients, increases water holding capacity of soil and sequesters carbon, end quote. Regarding CSU studies about carbon sequestration in the January 2020 Post Act meeting, the then Agricultural Resources Division Manager said, I honestly, quote, I honestly believe that there was a bit of an effort to make sure that we got to this compost piece and I think they may have stepped over some other possibilities of sequestering carbon. In other words, if the sustainability experts want a countywide composting facility, they'll find a way to justify it, even if it doesn't square with the study. Finally, Boulder County farmers have been treated as the enemy and condescended to for many years, and I believe that's unconscionable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Next up is Elise Berlin. Elise, are you there? Get unmuted the left-hand corner, turn on your camera there.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. The first thing I'd like to say is, the ban is not silly. It was actually pretty well-studied just a few years ago and a lot of people put effort into it and no one wants to feel like they've wasted their time. So I, I take pause with that characterization. What is unfortunate is that the farmers seem to feel like they have no alternatives and that this is the only option. And I think as a pretty advanced society, I think we can try and figure out ways that they might feel like there are options because, you know, there are a lot of businesses that have had to grow and change with the digital era. And it might just be the farmers need to really look at how they can be more in line with what the people of Boulder County want. Yes, doing it the way they've done it is certainly maybe easier, but is it what the people in this county where they live, yes, they've lived here longer, but that doesn't, you know, really change the fact that the population that we have living here now has some specific ideas about what they want. And we already voted on this, or you guys did, and now we're shifting the dialogue. I'd like to state that I'm a big fan of farmers and local ag. I did my Master Gardener Program in Boulder in 1996, worked with giving advice to people in the county for many, many years. I appreciate that keeping a family business going over generations is challenging, especially with the shift to off-farm jobs. But that doesn't mean we should opt for dangerous practices. And some of these are dangerous practices. They can't spin everything. For instance, you know, farmers applying pesticides have some of the highest rate of neurological disorders. You know, DDT was once routinely used until evidence and public opinion reporting the negative consequences could no longer be debated. If you look at data from any European countries, they have banned genetically modified crops. So we need to ask ourselves, why would they, were so many countries ban these crops if they did so much good for the world and if they fed the world? Why would other advanced countries ban it? And I'm talking countries, not counties. So why would the company that makes Roundup have an exit plan for this highly profitable herbicide? And why would large corporations like Home Depot and Lowe's no longer buy plants to resell to us that contain neanex in their soil? They've taken a stand. I'm sure it has put burden on their growers, but these large corporations have taken a stand.
Your time's up. Can you please wrap up?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Can't we help these farmers find another way to be profitable? The agricultural practices that got us into this mess, we are certainly in, are not going to get us out of this mess. I have more to say. All I can say is, we should try to help the farmers move into the 21st century and, and we can help them find markets. They have to be willing to work with everybody to find those markets.
All right. Thank you, Elise. So we have two more people on the list. If anybody else wants to testify that hasn't signed up yet, please put your name and your full address in the chat and we'll sign you up. So next on the list is Jan Wade. Are you there, Jan?
Commissioner Jones, this is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. We don't have Jan Wade in the attendee list at this time, but we do have Jeannie here.
Jeannie Dimmarinas, if I said that right, I hope I did. State your name and your address in three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Okay. I don't know if you can see me, but, um, okay, my name's Jeannie Dimmarinas, 8034 Left Hand Canyon Drive, Jamestown, Colorado. And you're probably wondering, what does some lady in the mountains have, what does she have to do with all this? Well, it happens that my daughter and her family have an organic farm out on East County Line Road and I've watched them for years now struggling because their land, which is on conservment, conservation easement from Boulder County, they're surrounded by Boulder County land that's being farmed by conventional farmers. And what's happening is because they're surrounded, they sometimes get sprayed when things are getting sprayed, there's all the different, Roundup gets leaked in and leached into their land and they've been struggling a lot to keep their farm organic. I want to make a plea to Boulder County to please help protect the small organic farmers who have been working so hard on Boulder County land to grow crops organically. There's a demand for organic crops, as you can see from the farmer's market. And it just doesn't seem fair that any organic farm that that's alongside county land that's being leased to farmers who are growing the GMO crops, that they're not protected. Um, we all know that, that organic produce is very much in demand. There's a good market for it here. So I just want to make a plea that these organic farmers be protected because if they're growing their crops, right next to them is Boulder County land that's being leased out to conventional farmers who can use Roundup, who spray, it's not allowing the organic farmers to grow their crops as they're trying to. And I want to make a plea to, to be more fair. That's it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Again, if anybody else wants to sign up, I see Daniel Golly signed up. If you could put your name and full address in the chat, it'd be great.
Is Jeannie still on?
Is Jeannie?
I think so. Am I?
If I can ask a question here quickly. Thanks, Jeannie, for staying on so late this evening. I got a chance to talk with you and Rod out on your, or I guess it's on his land on the small acreage organic farm that you're talking about, maybe a week ago. And wanted to ask one of the ideas, oh yeah, now I can see you, that you had, there was some conversation about potentially an ask, suggestion when we talk about some of these amendments to policy or just practices, buffer zones. And I wondered if, and if you don't have any more information about today, that's fine, but I also wanted to make sure that my fellow commissioners at least heard the conversation. If you were able to put any numbers to that, if there was any other information that you could share about in your comment about how do we protect small organic farm, farmers who are surrounded by other farming practices?
Um, I think this, this is an absolute necessity, um, you know, because it, there is such an impact. And I think somebody has to do a little more research as far as how many feet that would be. As we know, there's a lot of wind breezes in the county all the time. So even if a farmer thinks he's just spraying his own land, these gusts come up and all of a sudden, the organic farm is being drenched with, with chemicals that just destroys everything they're doing. Um, and I would like to see the county put some energy into this because I do believe the county really cherishes having the farmer's market and having people come and being able to buy food that doesn't have chemicals in it and is grown organically. And these organic farmers also are improving the soil by leaps and bounds in a way that can't be done by conventional methods. So I'd like to see, yeah, the county do something about this.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Thank you, Jeannie. Next up, Daniel Golly. And again, if anybody else wants to sign up, please put your name and address in the chat. Daniel, do you want to speak three minutes? Name and address, please.
Yeah, that's an interesting system. Takes a second. Hi, my name's Daniel Golly, located at 8825 Baseline Road in Lafayette, Colorado. And I'm grateful to be here. Thank you for opening this up for public comment. I am a board member of the Flatiron Young Farmers Coalition here and also consider myself proud to be a organic seeds and produce farmer here, several seasons under my belt and consider myself lucky to know I'm growing good, clean, healthy food for my community members. In that same vein, I have a great deal of experience with the, and empathy for the extent to which most farmers are just struggling to make ends meet. And it's, it's difficult often to hear about the financial burden of synthetic inputs and that are in GE seed and, you know, how most farmers are just lucky if they pay back, you know, what it is that they borrowed at the beginning of the season by the time the season ends. And it feels a shame to, to hear those stories when I also know countless stories that are easy enough to find of conventional farmers across this country that have made the switch to organic markets and finally found financial success and prosperity for themselves thanks to the increased market value of those organic commodities and specialty, specialty crops. You know, which is one perspective that I have in, in caring for our local farmers and wanting to see them succeed and hoping that they might consider those transitions for that reason alone, if not also greatly for the reason that I hope to see that, you know, elimination potentially, at least at some point in the future of pesticide and herbicide application on our public lands, considering that the entire purpose of those applications is the destruction of life. That is what they are designed to do is to kill biology. And I believe that the most successful farming methods are actually for the increased biodiversity of those systems. But at the same time, I also recognize that those processes, they take time and obviously I want to acknowledge and voice my respect and appreciation for the fact that previous Commissioners and hopefully, you know, our new Commissioners will continue to actually fund research and development of the appropriate crops and cropping systems for our ecological, you know, necessities here and, and what our environment needs in this area because just because we haven't necessarily found successful systems yet, I don't think that means that we, we can't. So I would encourage you and what I would love to see as a potential addition at the very least to the new cropland policy is that you will continue, at least in your efforts to try to find possible transitions for what might be possible and to continue in potential partnership building, you know, in, in, in creating the infrastructure for packaging, for processing and for distribution and for finding those markets so that we might actually be able to move in that direction at some point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So it's the last call. It's a little bit through the list. If anybody wants to testify, please put your name and your address in. Thank you. So it's the last call. It's a little bit through the list. If anybody wants to testify, please put your name and your address in. While we're waiting for that, Mike, can you remind us? Thank you so much for everybody hung through all this. I know it's a long time. I know this is important to you. We appreciate hearing from you. Mike, can you tell us when the Postac and the commission meetings are, please, again, in the time?
Really quick, excuse me, Mike, there's a hand raised and I don't know, I just don't know who Trace is.
Commissioner Jones, Trace Baker is on Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. And I, and I know that he wanted to ask a question earlier.
So if you would have that ready for us, Mike afterward, Trace is done?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Trace Baker, a Postac member. Very quickly here, the first public speaker, Dr. Newton, said that he had emailed a list of references on this topic to Boulder County Commissioners. And would it be possible for the commissioners to share that with Postac? Or even better yet, post it on the cropland policy website for everybody to look at. Thank you.
Yeah, Trace, we can do that. What we'll do is we'll send them to Mike and he can put them in the whole package. So you have everything together for putting your Postac meeting.
Yeah, that one came this morning. Trace, just for some clarification, which is why it wasn't part of the larger package of information that was shared.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Jones and actually the rest of the commissioners of Postac, just to kind of summarize the upcoming schedule. So we have our joint public hearing tonight and then on October 28th, Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee will be deliberating based on the public testimony that we heard today as well as the public comments that were submitted prior to October 14th, along with staff recommendations. On that evening, they will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, at which point on November 4th, the Board of County Commissioners will review and consider all of the recommendations, both from staff as well as Postac, as well as all the public testimony that's been shared to date, both through the comment period today as well as the written comments. And based on your deliberation on November 4th, you'll provide direction to staff on what those next steps are. And we'll go from there.
Thanks, Mike. Bree, is there anybody else? Do you think? I'm just trying to finish up the speaker list.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, could I, I have a question for Mike just quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Bree, let it, let us know. And I saw you trying to wrap up, but let us know after this, please. Go ahead, Claire.
Yeah, on process, Mike, and I think it'd be helpful for the public to know whether or not we are continuing to take comment via email. And I suppose that's as much a commissioner policy as it is a staff policy. But we ought to make that clear, whether people can still submit comments.
We will not be taking public testimony at the Postac meeting on the 28th or on November 4th. However, we will continue to accept public comments through the website up until November 2nd, midnight on November 2nd.
That was, that was a question of whether people can submit written comments. Thank you.
And that'll, that'll give us the weekend to package those comments up and get those to you ahead of the deliberation on November 4th.
I still have my process question. Are you, are you still working on public comment or are you wanting to close that first?
We are still accepting public comment at this point.
I'm sorry, Mike. Commissioner Jones, are you still working on public comment for this particular public hearing or?
I was going to circle back with Bree and make sure that we've gone through everybody. So can we do that real quick?
Yes, and then I still have my process question for.
Okay, sounds good. Hey, Bree, are we through everybody, do you think?
Commissioner Jones, this is Brianna Barber, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Thanks for your patience tonight. We've been on the lookout in the attendee list for Casey Lyons, Mario Gomez, Stephen Stewart and Jane Wade. And we've not been able to connect with those people. And as of right now, I don't see anybody else signing up or raising their hand. So I think it's safe to close the public comment.
Yeah, we announced it numerous times and you had the little banner too. So we'll close public comment. Marta?
Thank you. So process question, just to understand what the next steps are for this hearing right now. Typically, we would hear then a response from either Postac or staff in regards to the comments that were brought up. And so I just want to know if we're, that we're doing that now or if that's part of the November 4th. And any questions that we might have based on the different testimony that we heard.
Teresa, are you able to help address that process question? Not familiar with that aspect of this.
Yes. What I would say is you commissioners have two options. We are here, staff is here, the other expert witnesses. I believe many of them are still here. If you have some questions that you would like us to address particularly that you heard in this testimony, we are here to answer your questions right now. If you want to process it and compile them and ask them, Postac can do that at October 28th. We will be there to answer those questions. And if you would prefer to save your questions till the November 4th hearing, we will answer them at that time. I would say it's completely up to you at this point.
My understanding was we would ask questions of staff and deliberate at the next meeting. If there's anything pressing now and you feel like you wanted to ask, go ahead.
Well, I might ask one question. I think it might be helpful for Postac is going to be deliberating on the same testimony. If we have follow-up questions that staff can answer, it'd be great if Postac couldn't hear that as well. And my, my question has to do, Mike and Teresa and Cassandra too, I suppose. With, so the current cropland policy provisions on genetically engineered crops that, this is policy 6.1 that allows genetically engineered crops, I guess this was the 2012 policy, not as amended in 2016. And then it, it identifies six criterion, six criteria for approving specific genetically engineered seeds. They have to be compatible with integrated pest management. It has to reduce the impacts of pesticides on non-target organisms. It has to be compatible with core principles of best management practices for soil conservation, et cetera. Has, have the GE crops that we're just, we've been discussing here tonight, corn and sugar beet, specifically Roundup Ready, corn and sugar beet seeds. Do they meet these six criteria for being approved under the cropland policy?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. And then somebody, one of our recent witnesses did state that they hope that if we do agree with staff's recommendation, that we would revisit it in the future if markets change and technology changes, et cetera. I do see in here that approval of any GE crop shall be granted for five years at a time. And I assume that applies to the crops we were talking about here this evening. So at what point does the five-year period for Roundup Ready corn and sugar beets begin, that five-year period of approval?
My understanding, Teresa, please correct me if you have a different perspective on this. My understanding is that that approval started in 2012, when the cropland policy was formally adopted by the Board of County Commissioners at that time. So that five-year period would have taken the county until 2017. But since the county decided to change course in 2016, I would say that if the Board of County Commissioners were to change direction, that that five-year window would begin when the county board commissioners gives us that direction.
Yeah, so we would start a new five-year clock.
Okay, so this, in other words, this is not the final word here on these crops that it could, if we were to accept your recommendation at a, when we convene again, that would, they would continue to be reviewed in the future every five years.
It's a, it's a very good point that you bring up and our intent was to continue to provide annual updates on how things are going within agricultural industry on, within Boulder County Parks and Open Space Land. And we would be sharing that information through our, the Agricultural Resources Division Annual Report, which we post on the Boulder County Parks and Open Space website. So we would be continuing to update folks. And again, our intent was to hold at least a public meeting so that we could share those, those updates with the commissioners in a public format. And so that the community doesn't feel like we're just sort of going into a black box again and making decisions. But we intend to be transparent in the actions that we're taking and share progress where we're making progress.
Okay. And then the last thing is, I think it is, yeah. We got a comment, one of the very last of the 173 comments from Mike Sheropoulos, not about genetically engineered crops and neonics. He asked, because we're talking about amendments, revisions to the cropland policy of Appendix 10, I think was the one he asked about wildlife best management practices. There is really not a specific recommendation in here. And he asked when that provision would actually be completed.
We collaborate with the Resource Management Division within Parks and Open Space on a whole number of things, including prairie dogs and making sure that where those farms that have bald eagles nesting, we're coordinating with them to make sure that we've got appropriate eagle buffer zones so that our agricultural practices are not inhibiting the ability of our bald eagles to reproduce and fledge young successfully. So we do coordinate with them quite a bit. And we're in constant dialogue with that team to make sure that we're, we're keeping wildlife front and center in our agricultural decisions.
And I'll add to that, that we have, we have been talking with our wildlife staff and they have done some work on the best management practices. And this would fall into the category of, of a procedure where we talked about updating the cropland policy. The cropland policy will really have the policy aspects of it, the best management practices for wildlife and the other, some of the other things we've mentioned in the cropland policy will go into a procedure. So it will not be incorporated into a formal cropland policy.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Did you think, Marta?
Yes, I, I did. I have, thank you. And I was just trying to get to the right document. One of the questions I have, and I'm looking at the transition plan 2019. There's two different kind of expectations in that agreement or the document, I guess. One is that on, if it's helpful for folks looking on page two of eight on that transition plan, where it says the additional four-year beet extension would be accompanied by aggressive efforts by the county. And we heard some comments and there was some conversation about it this evening and read some of the comments about that. Can somebody, I don't know if Mad Ag is still on here. I don't know who else might be able to just talk about what that aggressive effort by the county is or was and also is there a definitive response to what was going to be, sounds like getting people out of their contracts or maybe not understanding the contracts and what that really was for sugar beet tenants. Or sugar beet growers, I guess, on ag land.
Here's Tanner.
Sure, chime in on that. As far as the sugar beets are concerned, the aggressive action that needs to be taken is largely within the legal realm. And, you know, we had early conversations with the prior county ag staff, including Ann Conrad, the county attorney, around what options may exist. Obviously, as was stated many times tonight, the contractual obligations with the beet shares is a major barrier as well as what, what are the alternative crops. But it is the, the contractual issues that are going on there. What type of aggressive measures can be taken are difficult to say. I am asked, my name is Tanner Starbord, I'm with Mad Agriculture for the record. And what those aggressive actions can be, perhaps the county could try to sell those shares. However, there's a lot of legal complications involved in that, including the fact that the, the board of the co-op can make decisions on what sales can go through or not go through basically at their sole discretion. So that is a major barrier. That is deep within the legal language there. You know, I think there is a number tossed around earlier mentioning how much it could cost per annum to pay the non-delivery fee. I think that specific number is going to be an aggregation of every individual context, but it would be an expensive thing to do every single year. But if you're able to offload those shares in their entirety, that would be an aggressive measure, but is not certain that that could occur based on the legal context and the market for those shares. There is not an aggressive current market of purchasers looking to acquire those shares, therefore making it difficult to offload them.
Thanks, Tanner. Since, since I've got you here, at what point did Mad Ag recognize that the language of this transition plan in regards to what it says in this document, I'm not asking about what could be trans-aggressive efforts here. In this document from 2019, it says that there'd be aggressive efforts and it talks about selling off or retiring beet shares. At what point did Mad Ag understand that from the legal piece repercussions that you just talked about was not feasible?
I think before our official engagement began on this project, we understood that there was some legal difficulty. But during the process in 2019, at the end of 2019, is when we really began a deep investigation into what that complexity really looked like. And so I, I shared a beet memo with Blake Cooper, who used to be with the county and Eric Lane and the commissioners towards the end of 2019 or early 2020, sharing my findings. I had a, a meeting with Conrad sharing those. So it was early on in the official process that it became quite clear that those legal hurdles were going to be truly difficult.
And Commissioner, welcome in. This is Mike Foster, Boulder County Parks and Open Space. I think that was in part some of the reasoning behind staff recommending at that time that the sugar beet phase out be extended until the end of 2025 because there was an acknowledgement fairly early on that there was some additional legal research that we, the county would need to do to help sort of extract the sugar beet growers from their contracts. But as Tanner pointed out, since then, we've gotten some more clarity on that and that we don't see that as a viable path forward.
Okay, that's helpful to clarify. There was one other piece in this same document, same page two of eight on the, the transition plan that says farmers who want to participate in this program and use the new deadline extensions would need to sign a new lease with the county by the end of 2019. So just to clarify, how many of the tenant farmers signed new leases in 2019?
Cassandra, do you have that number off the top of your head?
So, yeah, Cassandra Shinar, Boulder County Parks and Open Space Ag Division. So yes, all nine of our GE transition tenants did sign lease amendments.
Thank you. There was one of the other questions I had, and this is just for, for us to understand, it just seems like there's such, there's what public perception, just hearing from really a small What public perception, just hearing from really a small portion of three hundred and thirty thousand residents, but still. Um, a great turnout this evening and certainly in the public comment and response. On page three of the same document, it talks about, this is more around the, how do we create a market? Is there a market? For, you know, either organic or non-GMO, non-GE is the way I'm interpreting this. That says market access may also depend on new infrastructure and they will evaluate strategic investments into grain storage equipment for harvesting and post-processing, a regional malting house and other support mechanisms such as dedicated source for technical advice for new crops and more. It can, someone with Mad Ag, talk about what of that occurred and. And what came to fruition as far as. Creating that market access.
Sure, um, there's a few different channels that we can think about when we're talking about alternative crop markets. Um, the first. Uh, that is the most immediate and accessible um is non-GMO corn. And that market does not require any change in infrastructure and there is virtually no ceiling to that. Um, so. That is a market that that has a lot of. That certainly meets the scale of the farmers in question. We did expect. Uh, at the very beginning that we'd be able to find a non-GMO premium. However, that was something that we learned. Basically, due to geographical context, the non-GMO demand. Was outside of this range. The transportation costs made those markets less than than feasible. Therefore, the non-GMO corn is simply sold into the same market as the GMO corn, which is virtually endless. Uh, given the amount of dairies and feed operations that exist within eastern Boulder County, Larimer and Weld County. The other crops that could be used as alternatives are things like uh dry beans, pinto beans thing and, you know, navy beans, that that category. As well as heritage grains and other pulses. The dry beans can be sold uh into a. Uh, what we'd consider more of a commodity market at a high volume, but a lower price. That marketplace does exist. Uh, many of the farmers have been able to sell in that. However, it is not necessarily a a high value marketplace unless you're able to access. A wholesale channel, uh, which there was some success that occurred within this project. Through some uh strategic connections and a lot of uh manpower and effort to be able to. Navigate what existing infrastructure does exist within the county. Um, that was a challenge, uh, but we were able to. Uh, see that some of those beans were able to access local markets, um, be that local school districts, uh, local. Institutional purchasers or even some other local distributors within the Denver metro area. That market at its current phase, uh, the access to that demand. Is not what is required to be able to have that be a valuable option for every farmer with every acre. Uh, that's touching GMO crop production. That's true. Uh, the scale of that market at its current phase um is not. Um, fully viable for all farmers, but there is absolutely a pathway to expand. How much opportunity exists within the market domain, um, within both heritage grains, beans, other pulses and other crops. So I think that. What we did recognize is that it is more challenging and will take more time. Um, to create all those alternative markets, but it is also true that in this very moment. Those markets do not meet the entire scale uh in question with these current tenants.
Thank you. That was my next question. You answered it, but there is not currently a market for. The amount of acres that we're talking about right now with the the nine tenant farmers. Based on what you know right now. In at this late date and off, uh, you know, in twenty twenty one. When you say it's a pathway and there is some economic viable, you know, economically viable. Option here. Timeline, what does that realistically mean now based on what you've learned since two thousand nineteen?
There remains a challenging question here and across the United States. How do we rebuild regional food infrastructure? If I had that answer, I I in full clarity, I'd love to share that with you and many other interested parties across the country. Uh, but I do think that um what we found in the early couple of years of this project is that there is interest and there is demand and that. Some of the institutional purchasers, um, perhaps the Boulder County itself could be come one of these viable purchasers uh is. Is that? It's going to grow slowly over time. Um, and I think that there can be, there can be big bounds. I think that the Boulder County farmers that can grow these beans. There is a higher demand within the region. It's about, it's about the access and that infrastructure, but I think that it could occur. You know, within five years of aggressive development, that many of the farmers that want to participate in that market could do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Then from me, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Yep, thank you. So thanks, everybody for hanging in on this thing. You know, the new dates. Uh, we appreciate everybody's testimony and uh we are adjourned.
Thank you, staff.
Yeah, thank you, Steph.
Appreciate all of you. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Nice job there.
Yeah, and thanks, staff, for hanging there late night for all of you.
Yeah.
Well, you as well. Thanks for, yeah, thanks for all the good questions and listening to everyone. I think it was really good. Yeah, I just think it was really good. You heard, you heard all the sides, which I think is what we wanted.
I was gonna ask Mike about this issue of notice. People complained that there wasn't enough notice, but. Was there more notice of the the hearing that went until two in the morning than there was this one?
Yeah, I don't. I remember, I mean, they, you will always hear that there was not enough time. I think three weeks is adequate time to give people. Uh, you know, the ability to give their public comment and sign up. The fact that we're keeping it open for another two, two weeks. You know, people can still give their opinions. Um, yeah, I I think you always hear that there was not enough time.
Okay. Just just a reminder that the webinar continues streaming until um everyone.